Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, city manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tim and District Six.
Joanne Kogle, District Seven.
Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor, John House, Post Ten at Large Counselor.
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council.
And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good evening and thank you for joining us. We've got a full agenda today, so you'll get a great opportunity to view your council at work. We want to begin our meeting, though, as we begin all of our meetings. That's by asking God's blessings on these proceedings. We're really excited to invite to the podium one of our own, Dr. Valerie Thompson from Revelation Missionary Baptist Church.
Let us pray. I God be comforted for you with gratitude. I thank you for...
In a God of love, who is with us now and in this very place. God, you never leave us, nor will you forsake us. God, we thank you tonight for these, your servants, our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, and our council members. God, we give you thanks for the way of service they have chosen to take on behalf of all of us here. We all come to this place tonight as complex human beings, carrying burdens, carrying joy and hope, trusting that you alone can hold us together, oh God, in your love and peace. God, we ask now that you help us, Lord, to trust you more, more than our fears and our wounds and even our accomplishments. May we lean on your everlasting arms tonight. God, in your word, you may clear your expectation for those who sit in place of authority. And so we pray that we would be glorified tonight through the decisions of this city council. I pray that your kingdom will come in Columbus, as it is in heaven, through your power working in each and every one of your servants. God, we pray for wisdom, we pray for strength, we pray for courage, to do what is right and good for all citizens. May this council put the interests of others above their own's and may they act with love for the common good. God, we thank you again for this city, for this council, for this mayor, city manager, public safety, and our city staff. And God, we pray for all those who worked to make this place, we call home, such a wonderful city. In the name of Jesus, whose perfect love set us free from all, in the precious, matchless name of Jesus, we pray. Let every heart say, amen.
Amen.
Ms. Thompson, thank you, ma'am. Thank you for joining us this evening and thank you for those words. If you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will entertain a motion on the minutes from the January 3rd. Are there any, if there's a motion to receive them, is there a second? There's a second. And are there any edits or any comments based around the minutes? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, great. All right, first, we have an opportunity to recognize just an incredible occurrence in our nation's history. And I'm going to ask Counselor Toya Tucker to present this proclamation. And anybody who's associated with the Four Chaplains Sunday, I know American Legion Post 35 is here, if y'all want to come to the podium, please. There we go, sorry.
Thank you. The proclamation reads, "Whereas American Legion Post 35 will mark the 80th anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship Dorster on February 3rd, 1943, which carried to their deaths four chaplains of different faiths who stood uniting in prayer as the ship went down. And whereas these four chaplains, Roman Catholic, Jewish, Methodist, and Dutch Reform, gave their life jackets to four soldiers and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others. And whereas it is fitting, at a time when the freedom of the world is imperiled, that the city of Columbus should give special recognition to the memory of those who sacrificed their lives for the cause of freedom. And whereas the heroic deed of the four chaplains in their combined act of supreme devotion and sacrifice for American liberty and human freedom will be an inspiring and ever-shining example of real brotherhood for all time to the people of the world. And whereas we must all see to it that their supreme sacrifice to the cause of human freedom and justice for all shall not have been made in vain. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim, Sunday, February 5th, 2023, as Four Chaplain Sunday."
Sam?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Sam Nelson. My current hat is the Chaplain for American Legion Post 35. I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeffrey Gibson, who's the national champion for the Sons of the American Legion. As I was mentioning to the mayor earlier, this is a shining example for all of us. How many of us stand and will absolutely come to fisticuffs over some minor difference of opinion on doctrine? And then we look at these four fellows, who obviously of different faiths, completely, you know, not totally different beliefs, but dissimilar beliefs, that were able to make a sacrifice in the name of decency, goodwill, and brotherhood. I hope we never forget them, and I'm delighted that Columbus has decided to recognize these men at this time. I often wonder why we haven't done it before. But I tell you right now, I don't know if I would have had the nerve to hand my life jacket to someone else in the North Atlantic in February, as my ship was sinking under me. Thank you.
Pretty incredible act of bravery. If you would, come up here and let us thank you and present this proclamation to you. Mr. Gibson, do you have something else to answer?
Real quickly, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the National Organization, our National Commander, Chris Carlton, thank you so very much for giving us the opportunity to come before you and to honor the four chaplains. Y'all have always took care of our military, so we'd like to give y'all a round of applause. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. And, yeah, it's interesting, Pop Barnes brought this forward to present today, and he was unable to be here, he's a little under the weather. We ask that you keep him in your thoughts and prayers. But he asked specifically for Counselor Tucker because of her service to our country. So that is why she read that particular proclamation. All right. We'll move to, number three has been delayed, so we'll come back with that. But we do have a presentation with a couple of audits today. So I'm going to ask our internal auditor and compliance officer, Ms. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Prior to that presentation, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session on a matter of personnel.
On a matter of personnel? Okay, we've had a request to go into executive session regarding personnel. All right, there's a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for the inconvenience, but we're going to ask you to clear the chambers while council goes into executive session. You'll be called back once we're back in regular session. Thank you. All right, thank you for your patience and for indulging us. We have been in executive session. We discussed potential litigation and we discussed personnel items, and there were no votes taken. So we'll now, I do want to make an announcement as well, I should have done this earlier, that we have Counselor John House and Counselor Walker Garrett, who are joining us remotely. Both of them have obligations that are keeping them away from the meeting this evening. We'll pick back up with our audit reports. First one is on Public Works, presented by our internal auditor and compliance officer, Donna McGinnis. Donna, you want to hit the button over there and I'll turn your... Donna, if you could, on the microphone, if you'd hit that button and I'll turn your mic on. No, you'll have to hit the button on there, there should be one that, there you go. Just one, hit it one time. Hit it one time. There you go, stay right there.
Anyway, y'all have by now received a copy of the audit itself, and I'd like to walk y'all through the related PowerPoint. I believe we're pulling up the other PowerPoint for the second report. Can see it up there, but... There, over to the right. One more over. There you go. Okay. The audit was actually authorized by city council on February 8th of 2022. The audit process included the authorization of the audit development, the audit program, the entrance requirements of the audit date, and the conduct of the audit. Additionally, the preparation of the draft audit report, the exit conference for the audit date. The audit... The preparation of the final audit report, followed by the presentation this evening to the council. In terms of the scope of audit, the organizational structure of Public Works Department was reviewed, operations, the inventory and assessment of vehicles, capital equipment and facilities. Additionally, financial position. I also took a look at the employee verification and position description review, administrative and financial operations, business continuity plan, and the employee succession plan. The audit activities and observations began with tours across the department, touring of the recycling center, cemetery and landfill properties, as well as fleet maintenance, rainwater management, street maintenance, animal control, facilities maintenance, driver's training, community service and administration. I additionally met with the team from the Napa store, which is managed with, on site within fleet maintenance. I visited the citywide inventory area and found the area well-maintained and stocked with commonly used products. In touring animal control, observed that due to staff shortages, hours of operation had been modified, but also noticed that current fostering was alleviating capacity problems and that financial sponsors had been secured to fund several dog kennels. Additionally, in rainwater management, it was noted that the stormwater funding is largely spent on repairs and remediation as new infrastructure has been supported by engineering purchases. Payroll testing occurred with no discrepancies noted. Within community service, it was noted that due to the limited availability of probationers, along with limited full-time staffing, it was noted that the litter hotspot list, which involves the patrol of 96 main roads, often is not completely addressed each month. The volume of 3-1-1 work orders continues to increase, and as a result, only about half of the hotspot list is addressed each month. Within fleet maintenance, vehicle records were reviewed and found to be in good order, including titles, registration records, and departmental maintenance records that were maintained in an orderly manner. Additionally, advantaged budgetary reporting was reviewed for the most recently completed three fiscal years, with overruns associated with the use of outside vendors and contractors in fleet and facilities maintenance. Following a review of animal control, it appears that the Columbus Animal Control could benefit from ARP or other grant funding that may be used to expand our available runs, which would maximize our capacity and possibly minimize or eliminate euthanasia. We're now at the audit findings. Payroll administration was confirmed to be functioning very well. In a three-year review of budgetary performance, there had previously been budget overruns in the maintenance of capital equipment. It was noted that once fleet maintenance was more fully staffed, costs were then contained with repairs handled by our fleet team rather than relying on outside vendors. Fixed asset records were also well-maintained. Within integrated waste, it was determined that the currently monthly rate of $18 does not cover the cost of the provision of this service. Studies over the last few years have identified costs as high as $24 to $25 monthly. Rates are not yet established for supplemental bins or carts requested by service addresses or for requested handicap services. Upon review of the cost of the am waste contract, steps to bring the collection activity in-house have merit. The initial contract funding came from landfill reserve funds and will need to be replenished. Due to the deteriorating availability of skilled prisoner or probationer labor, our liability has increased and related legal claims are on the rise. As a result of a strict adherence to the four-year degree requirement for division leadership positions, there are several long-term vacancies at the helm of several skilled trade divisions. Aged capital equipment remains in service and will, and well beyond expected useful lives, with employees persevering, keeping assets in service. We are running out of available cemetery plots for indigent residents who may need them. As a result of recent staff shortages and departures, facilities maintenance is no longer able to provide skilled staff support at the Muskogee County Jail or at the City Service Center. Additionally, when staff has been insufficient, it's been necessary to more increasingly rely upon outside vendors or contractors incurring additional expenses. Driver's training and risk management doesn't have a well-developed succession plan with one FTE serving citywide. At a minimum, standards require instruction and testing to be conducted by two different qualified individuals. A couple of additional employees have been identified for training in the area, though additional budgetary positions do not yet exist. Third-party testing is also an unavailable option at the present time. The developing Public Works GIS team was running on budget resources drawn from several other divisions. The work unit is providing unique services not otherwise available from engineering GIS or emergency management or homeland security. A degree preferred or and/or policy would provide important latitude in hiring decisions, resolving long vacant leadership positions in those public works divisions that rely heavily upon skills in the technical trades. The acquisition of cemetery management software would also be helpful considering the scarcity of available plots on our current properties. In response to scarce cemetery plot options, a cemetery policy revision should address the criteria for indigent services, providing additional policy guidance, ray cremation options, and mausoleum accommodations. With additional recommendations, a rate study should be approved addressing the true cost of waste collection services with a review of the monthly rate, along with a supplemental cost for handicap services or a second carter bin provided at a service address. The action should also involve the development of a process for the ordering of supplemental bins at an address. A capital equipment replacement plan should be developed and funded as most heavy equipment has a five-year life with a supportive request reflected in the fiscal '24 budget submission. A three-person team should be established via the FY '24 budget process in the driver's training risk management office. While there has been some in-house development of additional teammates, the work area has an insufficient succession plan at the present time. Along with this action, it would be important to return to the provision of third-party driver's testing. Challenging employee retention issues can be additionally addressed by reviewing and addressing the pay grade disparities between the necessary CDL employees and our experienced skilled technical trade personnel. The Public Works GIS team would benefit from the establishment of their own budgetary division in future budgets, as their current funding is coming from funding pulled from several other Public Works operating divisions. This small team would benefit from additional specialized training as well as upgraded software. As the quality and availability of prison labor has diminished since the early days of the COVID pandemic, the additional liability and related legal action is on the rise. In response to this concern, it is recommended that we staff our own CCG waste collection team, which would allow us to more effectively implement automated services without relying upon the am waste contract. I made a short note here in that Drell Short, our Public Works Director, has responded at the back of your package with some additional notes, has some supplemental notes regarding the findings and has thanked me for my efforts inside of her department identifying recommendations, you know, for the benefit of her team. Do we have any questions?
Any questions for council? Counselor Crabbe?
Your recommendation about, can you go back to about am waste?
We can go back a little bit.
Is that one, right there?
Okay.
As the quality and availability of prison, which would allow us to have more effective implementation of it. When you're looking into the cost of the contract for am waste, did you look into the cost savings that we have? Not having to maintain vehicles, the gas, all of the other items that could balance some of that out?
I appreciate your question, and I have not dug into that, I certainly can in a follow-up. One of the things that we saw with the staffing of the prison labor that we're still doing, even under the am waste setting, the quality of this labor, and it's in the detail of your report. Prior to the pandemic, there were different rules in terms of parole incentives we could offer for quality work. We were receiving the correct number of inmates on a pretty regular basis. We now, and the business model itself, has to run on about 100 inmates, and frequently, we only received maybe 50. And what we had received in the past were inmates that had previous work history that took pride in their work. And if there was a payroll or parole incentive available, you know, they were proud of their work. What we're getting now, we get half the number we need, and we're getting folks that are maybe 18 years old that have never worked anywhere. And we no longer can provide parole incentives to reward quality work. So we're suffering in the business model there. Your question's very well taken, I can certainly follow up on that to see, you know, if we were to staff correctly, you know, what truly is the gap? Ultimately, the fact that we've pulled funds out of the landfill reserve to fund that first year of am waste, that's got to be replenished at some point, that's a given. But I can certainly take a look at that and follow up and return information to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Counselor Tucker?
Two questions. I thought we used ARPA dollars for the am waste contract, which is a grant.
Well, not for the services they provide. We used ARPA dollars to purchase the 39 automated trucks. But the money that we pay am waste, and I think we've probably paid them as much as $10 million. I'll have to verify it with the finance director. But that money came from our reserves in integrated waste. And we've even relied on the general fund for some portion, but... But the only thing that we've used ARPA dollars for...
For the 19...
Is for the trucks.
0.5, okay. And also, what's the timeline in reference to the follow-up for this audit? Are you gonna...
Oh, the follow-up referencing Counselor Crabbe's question?
Well, not just Counselor Crabbe's, but to some of the findings and the recommendations. Remember, we was talking about doing...
We've been talking about that, the follow-up. I will probably be out there, probably within the next 90 days, for sure. But the question we've had from Counselor Crabbe tonight, I will respond to that much sooner than the 90 days. I mean, I'm going to consider that homework tonight, you know? And I'll probably be out there, maybe even next week. You know, so there will be some follow-up to ensure that a number of the recommendations are addressed. Of course, many of the recommendations have budgetary impact, and we're just coming into the budget preparation process with the deadline of February 10th. So it's timely that we talk about what some of the needs are. But I'll be checking in with them before they turn their budget request in. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. McGinnis, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and there was an additional audit on Animal Care and Control Center by forensic auditor Elizabeth Barfield. Elizabeth, you'll come up? Barfield, Barfield, tomato to my...
That's not quite the same.
No, it's not, sorry.
Hello, everybody, how are you doing tonight? It's getting a little bit late for an audit. I hope everybody can stay awake for me. Here we go, Animal Care and Control of Columbus. Just recently completed this audit, and I've got something to say that I have never said before. Generally, when I do a PowerPoint presentation, it is simply for you to use as a guide to keep up with where I am in the presentation. Tonight, the PowerPoint is just as important as the information that I'm verbally going to be discussing. All of these pictures throughout the PowerPoint presentation are our animal control volunteers. All of the animals that you see in these pictures are our animal control animals. We've got two types of volunteers. We have got our citizens that regularly volunteer, and we also have a group from Hardaway High School, part of a program with the Muskogee County School District. They're working in a group of community-based instruction, or CBI. This is why our PowerPoint is so important, because we've got pictures of those folks throughout the presentation. This program is a vocational training program for students with cognitive disabilities who have completed four years of high school in a functional classroom setting and are seeking employment. We actually have those folks here tonight because they're real excited about, number one, seeing the audit presentation, and number two, seeing a city council meeting, and I've been told they want pictures. So Julie Friar is the head of the group. She is a specialized adaptive certified teacher. They're here tonight, and I just wanted to point them out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The audit was requested and approved by counsel on August the 9th, 2022. We had an entrance conference on August the 15th of 2022, and we recently had an exit conference on January the 10th, 2023. Because Animal Control has never been audited, of course, we've done a full scope audit. You know what that means. We come in the front door, we look at everything heading out to the back door, we touch every part of the operation, we look at all of the administrative aspects of the operation, processes, documentation, website, budgeting issues. Unfortunately, tonight, I'm not going to talk about any of that. If you have questions, though, about some of these things, I'm fully prepared to answer any questions that you have. Tonight's focus is going to be about the state of the operation, the state of the union. What type of work is being done at Animal Control? What, how much work is being done at Animal Control? And we're also going to be the step, talk about the staffing. Who is doing the work at Audit Control? From that point on, we're going to move on to some of the complaints that you have been receiving in the past. We're going to touch base with the Animal Control Advisory Board, and we're also going to talk about our volunteers. So let's talk a little bit about the statistics. Let's talk about the work that is being done and the type of work. Now, you see in this top corner, it says average, 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 just so that everybody understands what average means, is you get the total, you divide by the number of months. Okay? This particular statistics are going through 10 months of 2022, starting in January through October, 10 months. I have used those numbers and compared them to the same period in 2021, January through October, it's 10 months. So let's get started. Animals impounded. Those are animals that are being brought in from our field officers and citizens bringing animals in. 338 animals on average are brought in per month at Animal Control. When you compare that to 2021, that's actually a 10% decrease. And I know that's surprising for you to hear, but that is a decrease. The numbers of animals adopted from Animal Control, and when I say animals adopted at Animal Control, what I'm talking about is the staff of Animal Control actually doing the adopting out. 31 adoptions per month. When comparing that to 2021, that is a 22% increase. So Animal Control is certainly showing a success in that aspect. Animals euthanized per month, 34. That is up 53% over 2021. Now, if you'll notice, I've got on there owner-requested aggressive animals in capacity. Those are the three ways and the three reasons that animals are euthanized at Animal Control. Over the last three years, 57% of the euthanasia procedures have been owner-requested. I also want to make a note that some people are not aware of. In the state of Georgia, an animal is considered the owner's property. If an owner wants their animal euthanized, even if it's healthy, Animal Control must comply. In the state of Georgia, an animal is the property of the animal's owner, and if they want it euthanized, even if it is healthy, Animal Control must comply. So we were talking about some averages. Let's talk about some specific numbers. Specifically, a six-month period going from May until October in 2022. Now, I pointed out to you, the average impoundments was 338 impoundments. Uh-oh, my thing has gone away. Maybe I did something. 338 average impoundments. Well, in May of 2022, maybe I need to put that down. In May of 2022, there were 422 impoundments. In June, there were 473 impoundments. In September, there were 386 impoundments. Now, when you compare that to the average, you can see that it is above average. If you look at the last three years, the average impoundment for Animal Control has been at 345 animals. So you can see that that's quite a significant increase, 15% or more. I want to explain a little bit about what impoundments are. Animals are coming in, coming in, coming in. There is a process that these animals have to go through, and it's called intake. The shelter staff does the intake process, and what that is involved in that is the scanning of the animals for microchips. If the animal has a microchip, that's got to be researched. The administering of intake vaccines, entering the animals into the software, taking pictures of all of the animals and posting them on the website, and then continually maintaining the website so that anyone knows at a particular time where an impounded animal stands in the process. 75% of the euthanasias in 2022 occurred during this same six-month period. Now, we're talking about impoundments. Well, think about it. Impoundments, animals are coming in, coming in, coming in, but animals are also going out, going out, going out. Think of the game Musical Chairs. The music stops at any one point in time at Animal Control. There are approximately 100 animals in that facility. Well, we've got to maintain those 100 animals. So shelter staff is maintaining those 100 animals every day. They are cleaning all of the crates and runs twice a day. They are washing all animal bedding, changing cat litter, feeding and watering in clean bowls. They are administering medication and monitoring any animals that need to be monitored. During my time at Animal Control, there was one dispatched call where the field officer went out and brought back 10 animals. So we could have a relatively stable environment, and all of a sudden, when 10 animals come into the door, we've become in crisis mode. That is something our staff faces every day. It's unexpected, and they do not know when that's going to happen. So now that we've talked about the work being done, the type of work, how much work it is, let's talk about who's doing the work. Let's talk about staffing. On this table, I have divided Animal Control into four divisions, which is, I haven't done it, that's just the way Animal Control is set up. You will see there's a column that says fully staffed. For Animal Control to be fully staffed, they need to have 22 employees, divided among these four divisions. If you look at the last column, October, the end of October, there was a staff of 12. There are two reasons for this. Number one, we all know about CCG staffing issues. We all already know about that. We know that there are a lot of open positions and that they're tough to fill. The second reason, let's take a look at the column 2020. At 2020, it's a small number. It says 18. 2021 says 13, and then we follow through to 12. You might ask yourself, what in the world? Well, in 2020, there were some preliminary conversations, some initial talk about a change in management, maybe a partnership, maybe some changes in the way Animal Control was going to be run in the future. No details had been ironed out, and there certainly hadn't been any decisions made. But information was prematurely released and employees left for other employment. That has completely devastated Animal Control's operations, and they have not recovered yet. In terms of how it has affected the operation, field operations, they have gone from three shifts to two shifts. The third shift is now entirely funded by overtime. The field officers are frustrated, they are stressed, there's no backup, there's no additional coverage. Safety concerns are, have been heightened, especially if there are dangerous animal encounters. In November of, in November of the month that I was there, 2022, two of these officers were out on light duty. One was out because they were in a car accident, someone hit the animal control truck from behind, and they were injured. The second person actually had a dog bite, and they were out on light duty. What light duty means at Animal Control is that there is nothing physical that they can do. They cannot care for any animals. They literally have to sit and answer a phone and do administrative duties. So the strain is really applied to the remaining field officers. Shelter operations. Let's don't forget the 300 to 400 animals that are being impounded, and let's don't forget the 100 animals that are there to be maintained. On October the 27th, I came into Animal Control, and all but one of the shelter staff had called in sick. Thank goodness, we had our CBI group. They were there. They also called in someone from a scheduled day off to come in because they had to get that building prepared for citizens to come in at noon. Okay. The tone of the environment at Animal Control, it doesn't matter if we are just about fully staffed, if we are fully staffed, even if we are within capacity. Animal Control is a highly, highly emotional operation, probably more highly emotional than any department that the city has. You have got people surrendering animals. You've got animals being euthanized. You see abused animals, hurt, injured animals. There are citizens that come in that are frustrated with their animals. You also have a staff that is struggling with capacity issues, seeing more and more animals come in every day. It's the citizens, it's the staff, it's the volunteers. Everyone involved with Animal Control faces these emotional issues. It is the nature of the beast. Please, don't think that everything is negative. There's the pendulum that swings. When a citizen comes in to adopt an animal, when the rescues come in to take multiple animals, it is happy days, happy days. So regardless of what emotion we're talking about, there is a lot of emotion. It's called compassion fatigue. Employees suffer physical and mental exhaustion, emotional withdrawal, and they are experienced by those working and caring for the sick and traumatized, whether it be human beings or animals. The nature of the beast. But there are also outside influences. People outside of Animal Control do not understand or have a complete understanding of the operations at Animal Control. The state of Georgia, the Department of Agriculture, Department of Public Health, Animal Control has to work within all of those parameters. There are processes and procedures that people do not understand why, how, or when they are done. There are opinions and issues that are discussed publicly without all of the facts. During my time at Animal Control, I personally experienced and observed emails, internet posts, citizens' complaints to staff, citizens' complaints to counsel, the mayor, and online websites. I've seen those posts contain inaccurate, incomplete information, and many times, they were simply not true. Do not misunderstand me. Not all comments and not all complaints are not true, but I experienced enough of those to realize, when you receive something like that, you cannot take it at face value. When I was asked to do this audit, I was charged with finding out what in the world's going on at Audit, Audit, Animal Control? Why is it so emotional? I was asked to talk to volunteers, board members, citizens, the staff. So I had quite a few individual meetings that I would consider confidential. There were a couple of days when I was doing these meetings that it was just beautiful outside. This was fall. There was a little breeze in the air, sunshine, and we decided to go out into the parking lot of Animal Control and sit under one of the shade trees. Before the afternoon was over, there were text messages and emails discussing secret meetings going on in Animal Control's parking lot. It was a professional, innocent, working meeting that somehow got twisted to be not so positive. I had an opportunity to talk to people about the terminology that's being used when talking about Animal Control. Murderer, executioner, we're killing animals. That's hurtful. I started thinking, you know, if I worked in food service and I was preparing your meal, bringing you your meal, refilling your water glass, removing your dirty dishes, and I overheard you saying that I slung hash for a living, I would have my feelings hurt. I feel that it's disrespectful. When I approached people and asked about the use of this language, they told me that it was to get attention, to bring attention to the problem. I think it's disrespectful, and what it has led to is a defensiveness, low morale, lack of trust, reduced interactions, and a reduced sharing of information. I would like to ask counsel and anyone that receives comments or complaints about Animal Control, please look to see if Animal Control has been involved in this correspondence. Many times, Animal Control has been bypassed. If you get something, please send it to Animal Control. They can investigate it, they can resolve it, and they can answer any questions that might make the situation go away. We're going to talk about the Animal Control Advisory Board. There are 12 members on the board. Seven members are designated. What I mean by that is we've got some veterinarians on the board, Department of Health, and employees from Public Works. Five members are citizens that are appointed by counsel. I would like to make a recommendation to counsel that prior to appointing someone to the board, please look at the existing members and make sure that we have an equal distribution of all affiliations so that there's no leaning to one side or the other. The objectives of the board, to monitor Animal Control operations, provide guidance and assistance, review Animal Control's budget prior to its submission, and attend dangerous animal hearings. In talking with the board, there is a lot of frustration. They feel that they're ineffective. They feel like they've tried to make changes and they're not accepted. They feel like their interactions are met with resistance. They have tried to make changes to ordinances that they have not been successful doing. I would like to say that a review of the minutes of those boards have shown success. I would like to say that a review of the minutes of those boards have shown successes. Number one being our CBI group that has been implemented. PAWS is doing everything they can to alter as many animals as possible. We had a board member donate two hundred and fifty microchips. And we're also partnering with PAWS, they have an employee coming in on-site to counsel with citizens before surrendering, rendering their animals in hopes of resolving whatever issues they have and stopping a surrender. My recommendations to the board would be, let's focus on our immediate needs. Please come to Animal Control and observe and experience the hurdles that are being met every day. I think there are plenty of instances that will come naturally about things that need to be done to help things in the immediate. That's going to do several things, number one, it's going to build trust with the staff. It's going to give the board some feeling of success, and once they have that confidence, then maybe tackle things that are a little more challenging, like changing of ordinances. Animal Control volunteers. We have a vital position there in the volunteer coordinator. They're responsible for all aspects of volunteering. That position was vacant for six months in 2022, and it has resulted in the decline of some of our volunteers. In looking at the volunteer login and log-out sheet, in 2020, there was five hundred and seventy-four instances where a volunteer came in and donated approximately two hours of their time. In 2022, and we're just talking about through October, there were forty-nine instances where a volunteer came in and donated about an hour and a half. In speaking with volunteers, they felt like they were in the way, they were not needed. When they came to volunteer, they didn't know what needed to be done. They didn't know what had been done. They were receiving inconsistent messages from different members of the staff, and they were also feeling the effects of a stressful environment. Animal Control has acknowledged these issues and has been realigning staff. We have got a volunteer coordinator that is going to organize the work that's being done with the volunteers. So when they come in, they know what's been done, they know what needs to be done, and they can choose whatever their interests are as far as what they want to spend their time doing. So we're definitely moving in the right direction there. When I went through the volunteer log, I saw the same names over and over and over again. That's some of the names that are up on the screen. These people religiously came to Animal Control, and they were passionate about the work that they were doing. Some of them have fallen off to the wayside, some of them are still there, but I wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge their work, tell them they're appreciated, and say, come on back. That concludes the audit presentation. My experience at, at Animal Control has been very much like all of the experiences of everyone else. It's been very emotional, especially when you are dealing with capacity issues. The staff, the board, volunteers, members of the agency were extremely welcoming to me. They had so many ideas and so many thoughts on how they could work together and bring Animal Control forward. Everyone also acknowledged the tone of the environment and wanted it to change. And from what I understand, they have been working together to make those changes. At the end of the day, everyone realizes it's all about the animals. So thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any questions or comments? Counselor Crabbe?
Bring the city manager's numbers, item number seven forward while we're discussing this, the grant from Atlanta Humane Society. Because I was just, I know that we talk a lot about the need for kennel space. And this grant is being used for an animal washing station and to a meet and greet area. And I'm just wondering if that's the best, best use of those funds or if, if we're limited that that's what we have to use those funds on.
And Counselor Crabbe, and I'll mention, I have spoken with the staff about bringing back a recommendation on how we would fund increasing the number of runs. That's not the final answer to this because there's legislative issues, enforcement issues that we've got to deal with too, but at least this would give us some more capacity to be able to, be able to use. This, this city manager?
Have a little bit of a problem. I don't know why it won't turn your light on.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number seven on, on my agenda is Atlanta Humane Society Capital Improvement Grant. Uh, it's a grant from ten to thirty thousand dollars. Uh, the grant can be used to pay for capital improvements to the facility. And this particular grant is for animal washing, uh, an animal washing station. Um, and a meet and greet area will also be created, and there's no match required. And, uh, I could, would call Drell Short, the Director of Public Works. Uh, you mentioned you would like to see them, the funds used, I believe you said, for, um, extension of, um, number of runs or something like that. And as the mayor indicated, we are working in on, um, funding, a funding source to do exactly that. I've got Deputy City Manager Goodwin working on it. I do anticipate that we will find some dollars to extend the number of runs. But was this grant?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just trying to determine, is this grant limited to this washing station, or is this just?
It was limited based on the amount of the grant. So it can only go up to thirty thousand dollars, and we knew that we were looking for funds to try and expand the facility. But we also knew that to add on runs would cost more than thirty thousand dollars. So we wanted to find a way that would still enhance what we do, enhance the animals so that they are more adoptable. So we wanted to bring in a washing station for volunteers to groom the animals as well as a designated meet and greet area where they could go with the animal and have a meet and greet either by themselves with the animal, I'm talking about potential adopters, or if they have an animal of their own, then they want to make sure both animals get along together. So that was the thought behind doing those two different items.
So would this, um, free up some space that's, that's being used for these items now? Where we could possibly add runs into that space, or?
Um, I, I, I'm going to say no. The way that it would allow more space is get more animals adopted.
Right.
For the animals that are already in the existing facility. So to put in more runs would take on adding a whole section to this facility. And that area would not be comparable for that.
Okay.
Additional build, it's right between PAWS and Animal Control, so it's not a very large area.
All right, well, is there a motion to approve item seven? Uh, a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any votes?
And, and, and Mr. Mayor, while she's there, you know, I said earlier, I believe we've paid Am Waste around ten million. Finance director brought me a note, we've actually paid them, um, nine million, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred, ninety-eight dollars and eight cents, to be exact. So, uh, just wanted to make that note.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, Elizabeth, thank you very much. Oh, we've, oh wait, we've still got a couple, Counselor Tucker?
Thank you. Now, you know, I'm always going to ask, what's, what's the follow-up? But I, I, in the audit, it talks about a post-certified officer.
Yes.
Um, is that something that is going to be presented, um, during our budget cycle? Or how do we work on that? Because if they're post-certified, do they get extra money for being post-certified?
They're actually paid from the public service pay scale, from what I understand.
Okay, so it'd be a different pay scale when they post-certify? Because I know we have post-certified in, um, Parks and Rec. I know you have some in Public Works already. Um, so I just was trying to see how that would take place regarding this.
So currently, we don't have any post-certified officers in Animal Control, we never have. In order to have a post-certified officers, in order to get a different security level of inmate, we would have to have that officer sent to Forsyth, go through the process of becoming post-certified, and then they would be paid, uh, through the public safety pay plan, including the public safety pension. So that is not something that we've discussed in the past. Um, we've always been able to get blue cards, which only required, uh, an employee to go to a two-day class of making sure those inmates are being handled correctly. Um, we're hoping that we get more blue card inmates so we don't have to go the post-certified route. Um, I would also say that when we have inmates in the facility, it is just critical that we have an employee with those inmates because it is such an open facility. And you will have issues with contraband, people sneaking, trying to come in to see loved ones and things of that nature. We've already experienced all of that with our current blue card inmates that we had years ago. So there was no plan to put it in the budget. If you would like for it to be in the budget, we can absolutely do it.
Well, definitely want to have a conversation since it was one of the recommendations, and we do want to ensure that we are safe, number one, and, um, running a smooth ship over there at, um, ACCC. And also, in regarding follow-up, what, and when I asked, um, Ms. Donna McGinnis, it would be nice, just like you said, this was the initial. So we have initial, you know, annual, however, every three years. But then, once you get that, um, the audit, come up with a, a standard follow-up, like whether it's three months, six months. That way, we can find out whether or not some of the things that you put in here for recommendations were actually implemented. And also monitor whether those implementations, you know, the success or failures of those implementations.
I understand your desire to have that done, uh, and I believe it's necessary. But I would like to say that as I was going through and doing the audit, actually doing the audit, I was talking with Katrina Pearson, uh, with different findings that I had, and she was immediately implementing a lot of the things that we talked about.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things come to mind, the city manager, uh, mayor, um, I, I, a couple of good presentations, uh, I would like to thank our internal auditor's office. Um, you know, could we possibly find some funds to maybe do a development study uh, and, and take a look at what it would, you know, what it would cost? We need to understand that, okay? We need to understand full of what it would, what it would take to build some additional runs, okay? Obviously, that would save more animals, it would help, it would assist. Uh, based on what I heard with the, all these guidelines, whether it's from the state or, uh, the Department of Agriculture or other entities involved, I mean, you still have to operate under their requirements and their rules and regulations and laws. But still, it, it would be an opportunity to, to maybe buy some time that hopefully we can get some of these animals adopted or placed out in, out in the community. Uh, I see those challenges especially growing, uh, you know, now that we're in some, uh, what they term inflation, an inflationary period. It's, it's tough on a lot of people to, to, to take care of their animals today. So you're seeing a lot of, a lot of animals surrendered, and, uh, it's unfortunate, but it, it's the world we live in. I, I, you know, whatever it would take, available land, I'm looking at available land, space, uh, construction cost, uh, additional operation costs, things of that, and just some options, whether it's a renovation, whether it's an add-on, whether it's a separate, you know, unit, uh, so to speak. But is that possible to just to try, we've never done that, I don't think we've ever done that, but just to take a look at it. So if there is an opportunity to do some kind of a, uh, you know, a, a campaign that we can make something happen, you know, we would be, we would know what we're dealing with. That's the first thing I'd like to, uh, present, uh, if that's possible. The second thing is that, y- you know, I, I had a chance to sit down with our Director of, uh, the Internal Auditor's Office, and, you know, and it, we've been dealing with a lot of audits and things, and, and, and I've had a opportunity from a distance to view some of, quote, the interviews and things, and then talking to the Director, and what they do every day. Sometimes we don't know exactly what they're doing every day and how they go about it, but they, they put a lot of, let's just say they put a lot of mileage on the ground, a lot of mileage on the ground. And I was surprised, it just struck me, I, I should have recognized this, but I'm going to ask council to consider, in, in, in the near present, that we consider, uh, looking at a car allowance for all of our auditors. And I'm going to tell you why, because when you're taking your own vehicle and driving it around and going around, having to do all these audits and interviews and here and there, there's a lot of stuff happening there, wear and tear and mileage. And I don't think reimbursements and all is really solving the, the whole matter there. So I would like to, I, I didn't really, forgive me for not understanding that part, but it has really stood out to me in the last several months of what our auditors do and, and what they're doing out in the field. A lot of times, we just get these reports like today. But the truth of the matter is, they're moving, and they're doing it in their own personal vehicles. And they're, that's, you know, there's a weight to that, so I'd like this council to think about that. Um, uh, maybe in, in the near, uh, present that we could, uh, we could help them with that. I just, you know, we, we've talked about this many times in positions that we've already hired for reasons and purposes, but if, if there's ever a purpose to consider it, I would think what I saw and witnessed with all these interviews taking place and what we're asking them to do these days, and probably what we're going to be asking them based on what I've heard around this table of the workload that we're about to put on them, there's going to be a lot more of this. So I, I think it's appropriate that we, we consider that. So that's, that was my last thought. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Could I possibly weigh in? I certainly do appreciate that, that's a great idea. I would like to weigh in a little bit on adding runs.
Yeah.
Uh, and this is simply a layman's observation, and I've been talking with Drell about it and Katrina. That may appear to be a resolution to some of the issues, but it's like enlarging your closet. The more room you have, the more stuff goes in. We learned that lesson a little bit with the crates. We were trying to expand our capacity, and we realized that might not be quite the right, uh, direction to take. One of the main objectives, I think, that is valuable for Animal Control is to have the objective of lowering the number of animals that even come in to Animal Control. So just a different perspective.
And, and, and Mr. Mayor, if I may come in on that, um, and I absolutely agree, but I think in this instant, I mean, I agree. In fact, I said to the deputy city managers, when we talked about, um, finding the money to add the runs, you know, I want, we need to do it. But I told them, as soon as we get the runs, the, the additional runs, we're going to fill her up. I mean, just like that, and we're going to have the same situation. That is what I told them. You, you have taken the words out of my mouth.
Really?
Yes, yes. And, and, but, but I think in this instant, we, we do, we, we add the runs, but we do what you just said. And that we don't have to then go forward after adding these additional runs and say immediately after we have completed the project, we need to add runs. Because you'll keep hearing, we need to add more runs, and we'll- Cause you'll keep hearing, we need to add more runs and we'll never stop saying, we need to add runs. So we need to do these, but then do exactly what you said.
No, I I I I agree. But uh but I do think that a community our size needs more space for those animals. But it has to be accompanied by legislation that's gonna slow or eliminate. I'm not advocating this yet, so don't start blowing my phone up. But some of the puppy mills where they're 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 selling dogs in in pet stores. Yeah, and so, you know, getting a handle on that, having the capacity to be able to enforce this, having more manpower so that they can go out there and and try to enforce these these laws. So it's it's a piece of the puzzle. It is not the answer, but I think it's a fairly important piece. Counselor Davis?
Yes, and that's in respect to the recommendations. I think those are really important. Yes, you gotta work on the current now. Like I said, I think having a study helps us in the long run. We don't have that on file. But yeah, you have to kinda get your house in order today with some of the areas. That's why I mentioned the the operational budget on the side. I'd like to see what it would take. But certainly uh the points that were just made are are very valid and important and part of the recommendation. So that's not discounting the recommendations. I just think that we need to have something on file. Doesn't mean you're gonna be able to move forward with it. But at least we understand it and we know what we're talking about. Cause there's gonna be probably an additional operating uh cost and expenditure that comes along with that. Even if you can, you know, with what you see up here, you're not meeting the demand of the needs of the current facility as far as the labor component. But but, you know, i- if you can, and then you can expand, we just need to understand that. I think it'd be good to, you know, to have that uh so we we can work with.
Thank you. All right, here's the other questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to the city attorney's agenda. Mr. City Attorney? You wanna hit your button?
I hate to interrupt, but they did want some photo ops.
Oh, ab- absolutely. They, if if they're.
Oh, they're gone? I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
All right, thank you, Mayor. We do have a lot to get through on our agenda. Got a lot of zoning items. We'll call up first. The uh planning director, assistant director, Renfro is here. First one up is twelve twenty-six Sixth Avenue going from light manufacturing to U P Uptown. Jack Hayes is applicant. Mr. Hayes is here. This is for uh office use, I believe. Are there any questions around the table on this one?
Doesn't appear so.
Okay, anybody in the audience wanna be heard for or against? Don't see any hands, so we will bring this back. Um, Mr. City Manager, are we gonna do a regular consent agenda next week or we wanna bring it in February?
I I think we'd indicated that we would have just a short consent agenda that would last fifteen or so minutes. And I mean, if it's truly consent, I think we could do it on the thirty-first. But if it's not, it.
Well, we got, we got at least nine items that we we may have on the consent agenda.
That's a lot of them for what we're trying to do. So I would say February, but I'll let you decide whether it's something we need to.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, that'll be the second Tuesday in February.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Hayes. Anybody wanna comment on that?
I do.
Mayor Protim.
Mayor Protim, can you light up Counselor Davis? I mean, Counselor Thomas.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, I would recommend that we not have a, we not limit that um consent agenda to fifteen minutes. If we don't deal with this within uh next week, it'll be the second week in February. And I know that these folks who are looking for these um um rezonings need to get busy on doing the rezonings, and I don't want them to have to wait three weeks to do that. I would like for us to put this on the consent agenda. I think this is as important, if not more important, than taking a bus ride.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I did just wanna say with the consent agenda, we could just take one motion. And second, to approve all of the items at once. And so we wouldn't necessarily need to do them individually.
Counselor.
And I just mentioned that since all of the items would be something that the uh that there is a consensus from the council.
Counselor Thomas?
We've got, we've got uh seven or nine, what'd you say, nine different, different ones. Each one of them is different. You're not gonna be able to lump them all together and vote on them. You have to vote on them separately. Uh, it may be that I wanna vote yes on number one and no on number two. And I can't do that if you lump them all together. I do not agree that we need to lump them together. We need to take them one by one.
If there are any that are contentious, they can be removed and not uh be listed on the thirty-first.
Historically, we have pulled anything that was contentious, we've pulled, but let's uh.
We normally list all these items separately, but it won't take long if there are no objections to approving them.
Okay, but we'll have them all on the agenda regardless.
All right, Mr. Hayes, that's gonna be next week at nine AM, right back, right back here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item is zoning at nineteen forty-seven Wenton Road. Uh, this is going from residential office to general commercial to the east of Dinglewood Pharmacy for market use. Mr. Riley is here. Are there any questions around the table?
Uh, yes, Counselor Huff.
All right.
Yes, uh, okay, there he is. Yeah, we all met and spoke about this project. And somehow it was listed once as just a packaged liquor store. That's not what it is. So I just wanted you to go over what we talked about and the uh provisions that were added so that if this uh particular business goes out of business, it goes back to the original zoning.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Huff, and thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protim and City Manager for y'all's time. I know y'all uh have a full agenda, so I'll try to be brief. But um to Counselor Huff's uh point, what this project's gonna be, it's it's a building right next to Dinglewood Pharmacy on uh Wenton Road, right uh immediately next door. It used to be an Aflac uh office building. Um, and they're looking to make a high-end market there that's gonna have like a little butcher shop involved to sell gifts, kinda curated gifts and and high-end food products. And additional, also sell uh top shelf wine, beer, and spirits to go with the food they're selling there. So it'll be a market of all ca- all different types of uh of products. Um, and to what Counselor Huff mentioned there, um, this property was purchased by uh Mr. Drew Godwin, who's here as well tonight, uh and his partners, uh Johnson and Crystal Traywick. And their plans to put this market in, before they bought it, they talked to Aflac. And so when Aflac knew these gonna, these people were gonna remain their neighbors, they put in some restrictive covenants, actually in the deed that are recorded in the county records. They run with the land. They are a part of the uh property records. They apply to these owners as well as any future owners of this property. And those um restrictions uh say that the property cannot be used for the sale of cigarettes, lottery tickets, uh or the operation of a tattoo parlor, vape shop, massage parlor, gas station, or adult novelty novelty shop. Um, and if the current owners sell or lease the property to a third party, the property cannot be used uh for the sale of alcohol, alcohol as a package store. So that's in the deed records. That can't be changed, and it's gonna run with the land. And so that just ensures that it's gonna be operated properly by these current owners and no other future owners or tenants can can do otherwise.
And if you would, give your name for the clerks to record.
Thank you, yes. Chandler Riley, P O Box eleven ninety-nine, Columbus, Georgia, with the Page Granton Law Firm.
Thank you.
Okay, does everybody understand those are deed restrictions? They're not in the ordinance, but they are filed in Superior Court Clerk's Office. Right? Any other questions or comments from the audience for or against? All right, we'll bring this back next week at nine o'clock. Next zoning item is property at eighty-two fifteen Cooper Creek Road going from residential office to single family. Bernard Jones applicant, are they here?
No, sir, doesn't appear to be.
All right, do you wanna just continue this first reading until February?
Y- yes.
Okay. We'll just delay this and give them a chance to come back second Tuesday in February.
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Attorney, just for the record, uh as a counsel for this area, I I haven't received any calls on it, so I'm okay with it. But if you wanna go ahead.
Well, no, it's, it's a matter of uh counsel's discretion whether we go on, put it on second reading next week. If you've had no opposition?
No, and 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 what it is, is uh Will White, when he purchased the apartments there, rezoned this little strip to R O so he could have an emergency uh cut through to Cooper Creek Road based on the number of apartment units. Instead, he built it around the pool where it goes back out to veterans. So this couple came along and bought it back and are just rezoning it back to single family, so to be part of their yard.
Okay, it is part of a residential lot on the plat, so I can't ima- imagine much opposition for more grass or bushes. But we'll bring it on second reading and then see if there any further questions. Next week. All right, next one, Mr. Boyce is here. This is for forty-thirty Veterans Court Auto Shop Rasmussen Application uh going from R O to General Commercial. Any questions around the table?
No, sir.
All right, any comments for or against? Mr. Boyce will have this on at nine AM next week for a vote. The fifth zoning item is property at sixty-three thirty Lynn Ridge Avenue. This is the Columbus Botanical Garden uh residential office. But it's single family use, I believe. Is there anybody here from Botanical Garden? All right, Mr. Gibson's here from Page Granton Law Firm. Are there any questions?
No, sir.
All right, we'll put this, uh unless there's any other comments for or against. Don't see any hands. We'll put this on for a vote at nine AM next week. Thank you, sir. Next item is a U D O text amendment. This does add some definitions to our Unified Development Ordinance. It deals with crypto mining as a special exception use in heavy manufacturing. Is that right, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, along with a few others.
Along with some uh trailer regulations about no prohibition of trailers on the right-of-way.
Yes, uh condominium definition, um adding banquet facilities and assembly halls as a permitted use in the C R D. Um, cryptocurrency mining is a special exception in L N uh H M I. Um, and then parking requirements and other requirements. And then I think the last one is, yes, parking, storage of recreational vehicles, boats, and trailers on the right-of-way. Prohibiting that.
Okay, any questions around the table? This has been in the news some with crypto mining. They use electricity and have a certain amount of noise. So this is heavy manufacturing zoning only.
Well, and one reason we've restricted it so much is we allow um, what do they call the digital, digital processor? The phone company for AT&T, for instance, has one right there across from Sputnik. That is a digital exchange or data processor. And crypto mining companies were looking at Columbus to come in here and use that definition as um a way to get in here. So by restricting them, we've pretty much made it where the only place they could locate is out near post in the M T P. They're a nuisance uh use. Um, so we're trying to get in front of it now before they slide in here under some other use that's existing in the U D O.
All right, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. On the boats and trailers um on the right-of-way, are, is is that um trailers, like um eighteen-wheeler trailers and bigger? Or are we talking about just like, what kinda trailers?
Any trailer.
So that would include?
You you, they shouldn't be parked on the street.
Okay, great.
I think we already have uh public safety ordinances regarding eighteen-wheelers and their trailers.
Okay, cause I'm getting calls about that, so thanks.
Counselor Davis?
Just curiosity. I I think we've all lately, a lot of news out there pertaining cryptocurrencies and potential impact and mining has. I mean, there's been comments made that sometimes mining could, could uh cost as far as energy what it would take to run a whole country. Uh, I, you know, I'm hoping there's no residual impact. But have we even thought about talking to Georgia Power or others of what this type of activity does in our communities as far as passing on any kinda potential impact to the citizens?
I mean, if you guys want.
Certainly, everybody pays their own bills, but I I don't know. I I really don't know.
Well, you've gotta have the infrastructure uh in- infrastructure to support it, and I'm sure Georgia Power has that infrastructure. But it is a nuisance use on many levels, from utilities, environmental, noise. Uh, C N N had a big story last week on the one they've built in uh Murphy, North Carolina, which is not twenty miles, twenty-five, thirty miles north of Clayton, Georgia. People can't sell their houses, can't sleep at night. Um, it is a true nuisance pro- problem. Um, some of these small towns in the south have allowed them to come into their downtown areas, not knowing enough about them and have just about ruined their downtowns. Um, they look like a substation. Um, so there, um, and I think the one in Murphy had several, had several buildings built, but only had one had turbines operating. So they hadn't even finished completion of the development, and it's already a nuisance.
Well, I think what you're putting here is a door that we have to open. I mean, you can't, gotta get through that door first, I think, as far as a special exception. But I, you know, I would ask the question, do we need to understand that uh to, at what point does it start having an impact in your community? Where? Uh, can you hide them? Can you put them in certain places? I I don't know, but if this is something new we're getting into, maybe talking to some people that could give us some more information on them, might be not a bad thing. But it sounds like you've been doing a little homework of your own on it.
Yes, we we've looked at it thoroughly. And I mean, it, I'm I'm not opposed to a moratorium or anything like that. It is, they show up with big bucks and these smaller communities jump on it, and it does its damage.
I'm sure you'll let us know about it when it starts happening, right?
Definitely.
Limiting where it can happen.
Okay, any other questions around the table? This'll get that codified. Um, we'll bring it back next week for a vote. Next item up is short-term rental regulations, item seven on our agenda. You wanna run through a few of these highlights, uh, Mr. Pruitt? And then we'll see if planning folks wanna add anything.
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. Um, a brief presentation highlighting uh the current short-term rental ordinance as well as the proposed uh changes under consideration tonight. Um, so the current ordinance was adopted October ninth, twenty eighteen. It was originally uh created to address issues um with the tax collection related to to rentals. In the past, um each rental was responsible for collecting and remitting. rated to rentals, in the past, each rental was responsible for collecting and remitting hotel motel tax, local taxes, since we implemented this, state law has changed, and now the host websites such as Airbnb, V R B O are now required to collect or remit that tax directly to the city, so each rental unit is no longer responsible for that function, it requires all rentals to obtain a permit from inspections and codes, and then after they get a permit, my department, they obtain a business license from the finance department, and owners and agents must complete a background check, they are permitted in all residential and commercial districts currently, the ordinance does allow the license to be revoked if they get three code violation convictions within a twelve-month period, that's not three warnings, that's three convictions, which means they went to court, recorder's court, and got found guilty of an offense, minimum fines, first offense is five hundred, second seven fifty, and then third is a thousand. So over the past year, again, we started working on this revision over a year ago, we started getting complaints more about short-term rentals being a nuisance to neighborhoods, so some of the most common complaints were that the rentals were being used as a party house, that they weren't being properly monitored by the owners and agents, and the guests were using them as party houses, lack of communication between the neighbors and the rental owners, you know, the neighbors didn't know who they could call when there was an issue, and then that rentals are overrunning certain residential neighborhoods that residential neighborhoods were losing that hometown feel and were becoming more of a commercial district. So these revisions are intended to address some of these nuisance items, again, this was complaints brought to us from the citizens, and that's why we brought forward some of these proposed solutions, so the provisions of the current ordinance such as permitting, the minimum fines, license taken away, all remain the same, one additional hurdle that the advocates would have to do is they would be required to notify the adjacent property owners that they are intending to be a short-term rental, so they would be provided to send certified mail and provide all their contact information for the owner and the agent, that would be a new addition to the application process, a door sticker will be provided by inspections and code, it wouldn't be a huge red, you know, twelve-by-twelve sticker, it'd be a small, pretty discreet sticker that can be placed on the door of the unit, and that is intended to identify the property as a short-term rental, so any responding officer can know that this is a rental, specifically, you know, after-hours calls with CPD or whoever is responding to the call, they can easily know that this is a, a short-term rental, proposed ordinance would clearly limit the number of documents to no more than sixteen, and it clarifies that a short-term rental is intended to be a minimum stay of twenty-four hours, you can't rent a rental for two hours and turn around and rent it again for two hours that same day, that's an event center, not a short-term rental. This is a map showing the current rentals in Columbus, you know, we got this data through a partnership with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, they have a contract with a software company that pulls data from all the websites and can send us a list of addresses, so there's approximately three hundred and fifty throughout the city, currently a hundred and seventy-five, approximately a hundred and seventy-five are properly permitted, included a blow-up of the downtown historic district seen on this map, so again, there's approximately fifty alone in the downtown historic district, and approximately thirty-five of those fifty are legally operating at this time. So I showed those maps to go to this next part, which the proposed ordinance would introduce a cap in historic districts throughout the city, including the downtown historic district and the Weracoba-St. Elmo, additional caps can be added later at council's discretion, so there's another part of town that has an influx of rentals, we can certainly create a, a district that captures that area of town and implement a cap in that part of town, owner-occupied rentals would be exempt from the cap, they are not exempt from permitting and licensing, but they would just not be included in that, that count towards the cap. So the examples of the proposed cap, proposed ordinance from the planning department and staff recommends a ten percent cap, so in the downtown historic district, that's ten percent of all the parcels in the historic district, which equates to forty-four parcels, again, you'll see in the staff report that, that PAC did recommend a five percent cap across the board, so again, there's the note about the fifty rentals currently operating, thirty-five which are legal, and then you can see the same numbers there for the Weracoba-St. Elmo Historic District. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Crabbe?
Thank you, Ryan, I thought that when we passed this in two thousand and eighteen, that they were supposed to have a sticker by the front door that had the contact information in case of emergency or something.
So they are, they are required to have the permit displayed in the unit, but they're not required to have anything on the exterior, so again, they're required to have the permit in there, and there may be other regulations, you know, the websites, you know, those rules, but for our city ordinances, they're only required to display the permit inside of the unit.
Oh, I thought you said that they were going, well, I'm, there's, but there's going to be a sticker on the outside of the property, right?
That, that's in this proposed revision.
Well, I'm just wondering, I'm going to throw it out and then we can, you can, you know, research it, what about next to that sticker that there's an emergency contact number, so that if, you know, maybe the neighbors know, but maybe the neighbors are out of town, and so somebody, we, it's very easy to find the emergency contact number and have them call that.
So there was, we did consider that, there is a consideration of the rental owner or agent's privacy as far as having their phone number, you know, displayed just out on their front door, there were some concerns about that, the intent for the stickers is, you know, it would just strictly have a permit number or some other identification on it then, that a responding officer can go back and reference a database and pull up all that information.
All right, Counsel Kogle?
In the, in regards to that sticker, I have a, a little bit of reservations on, on the sticker, just that if we're labeling our houses that are Airbnbs that are either vacant or have out-of-town guests in them, they now become prime targets for breaking and entering for, for car thefts, just because if I were a thief and I was going to go around and knock on, on car doors, I now know that you're out of town and you likely do not know the processes of contacting the police, therefore, I have a little bit more time to get away. So I do, I do have some reservations on the sticker, is there a way that we can communicate with our police department and tag that within the police department if somebody were to call nine-one-one, and be able to have that information available on the back end, rather than, and I mean, even if it's a little, a little sticker on the door, I've had people knock on my door who should not be knocking on my door, and I, I, I think that there's a little bit of a privacy issue there.
So we have, in the past, had a limited sharing of information with the, the police department, the sticker, we felt was the most foolproof, you know, way to ensure that, because as soon as you get your permit, you know, we're going to hand you that sticker right at the same time, and you make sure it gets placed on the door, so we felt that was the most foolproof way to do it, if it's not council's desire, we can certainly, you know, come up with alternate ways or try to improve the, the communication with the police department.
Okay, Counsel Thomas?
I have two questions, Mr. Pruitt, you said that the adjoining neighbors would be notified of the numbers, is it just the immediately adjoining, or is it some two houses down or whatever?
The, the intent was just for the immediate adjoining neighbors to be notified.
Okay, and one of the slides that you put up said there were a number, there were this number of, of Airbnbs and this number that were operating legally, and they were different numbers, can you explain that a little more?
Yes, so currently, there are, like in the, in the downtown historic district, for example, the information we pull from the software shows that there's approximately fifty rentals operating that are advertising on Airbnb or those websites currently, we only have about thirty-five that have the proper permit and business license that have gone through the process on files, that means the other fifteen are operating business without the proper licenses.
And are we approaching those folks, are we doing anything to make sure they either close up or they operate legally?
So right now, we handle the short-term rental complaints strictly on a complaint basis, so we are currently not proactively, you know, researching the web and pulling the data, we, you know, rely on the, the neighbors to call and report an unlicensed short-term rental, and then we treat it currently like any other business that didn't get the proper business license, so we go issue them a warning, give them a period to come into compliance, and then if they fail to do that, then we issue citations, and so far, all the rentals that we have gone out and warned and said, hey, you know, you have to get this permit, you have to get a license, they have all complied with that immediately, so we haven't gotten to the level of issuing citations, once the revisions are in place and everything is finalized, we do have a plan to get more proactive enforcement policy, so that's what we're working on currently.
I, I would not want anyone to believe that they could operate any kind of a business in the city of Columbus without the proper license and those kinds of things, so let's, let's get on it, thank you.
Counselor Huff?
Thank you, Mayor, where's mine, Weracopa Park-St. Elmo Group, anybody here from over there, stand up for a minute, I want to see you. Okay.
But I'll show you left and right.
Okay. Okay, 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 you can be seated, thank you, I just want to know who was still here, thank you all for being here, I think last time, a couple of you misunderstood me and thought that I was against the five percent, some of that district is in my district in District Three, so I've been for it the whole time, my question has been to Director Pruitt, as we implement the five percent for the Park District, why can't we implement the five percent for the city? Any?
So to, for the cap to be effective, it has to be a small enough district, you know, because if we are going to do citywide, you know, that's how many residential parcels are in the city, and five percent of that is still, you know, well into the thousands, and all of those rentals are going to concentrate in these heavily poppy, you know, where the rentals currently are, they're going to be downtown and, and in our historic districts, so we have not seen the overwhelming number, we know there are rentals, you know, here and there in those other subdivisions and, and parts of town, but the concentration, you know, is really only in those historic districts.
While, while we're doing the historic districts, and you test District Three with them?
So I could, if you wanted to know how many rentals, you know, what percentage of residential parcels in District Three were rentals, I could get you that information, I don't have it tonight, though.
Because right now, we don't know the difference between Airbnb and party house, we have some things going on that we're trying to get a grip on, what was significant to me in the reading of all of this is the fact of everybody having a love for their neighborhood and caring for the neighborhoods, and that's what I'm all about, and that's why I agree with the process, but we also have some people outside of the Park District that want the same thing, so I'm not against it, not voting against it, I'm for it, we move forward with it, I'm just trying to figure out how to get something going on in the rest of District Three to protect the rest of the residents, because we have neighborhoods within District Three and close to District Three that have histories of sixty, seventy-plus years going on upward, you know, and people are finding a way to just move around in Columbus, if I can't do it over here, I just move over here, so after we finish doing what we're doing now for the Park District, I'm just trying to figure out how we protect District Three and the rest of the city, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Davis?
Thanks, Mayor, I, I lost the ordinance requested amendment, but I remember there was a part in there that talked about sixteen inhabitants, I believe, is that right, occupants? What do you, what do we base that on, is that just, I mean, do we just, are we just randomly saying that any dwelling that's being used as Airbnb can hold up to sixteen of them, is, is that what it's saying?
Yes, and that came from feedback from some of the operators, that's the limit that some of the websites put on them, the concern with doing it, you know, by a bedroom basis or, you know, something like that, was how strict it was, and, you know, I may have a two-bedroom unit, but I may have a family that's renting it for a military graduation and wants to have grandma and grandpa and everybody stay with them, and so if they were limited to six people just because they had the two bedrooms, then that could inhibit their ability to have those functions, so that's why we went with the sixteen.
Well, I'm just thinking out loud here, there's a, you know, I don't know many places in Columbus that's going to hold sixteen inhabitants, to be honest with you, and if you were to put them in a small area and a small floor plan, it's probably going to have an impact in some way somehow, so I, I'm just asking the question, do we need to look at that more along basis along square feet, or maybe limiting that from a standpoint, I can see sixteen people living in a house in, down in Lake Bottom area and having four cars and just the house packed and lots of noise all over, you know, just, I don't have to walk you through a potential scenario, but you get the picture, I, I'm just asking that question, if we need to define that a little better.
Yes, certainly, other municipalities have taken the, you know, per bedroom or, you know, two people per bedroom or that type of thing, you know, perhaps there's a, a way to say, you know, after ten PM, it's limited to two people per bedroom, that way if they're having dinner parties and that thing, that they would still be able to have those functions.
And granted, I can see children be a lot different than adults, you know, you may be able to put more children in a room, but certainly if you have eight couples in a, you know, two, two thousand square foot property, I mean, that's, most likely it's four cars and a lot of other things that go along with it, you know? So, anyway, I'm.
Sixteen's a little excessive.
I don't have a recommended suggestion, but that did strike me as, as something we might need to look at.
So, Counsel Kogle?
I have a couple of questions, the, can the Airbnb licenses be transferred under the same owner, but the, can they transfer that ownership or that license from house to house, so say if I owned a house and I owned a apartment and my house is going to generate more income for me and I'm under a cap, what's to stop me from switching my license, can, can I switch my license from, from my apartment to my house and generate more income from a business perspective?
So each?
Because it's still under my name, or would I have to throw it back in the pot and get in line if we were at a cap?
And the city attorney can confirm that, but the, the license goes with that owner of that property, so if you were switching properties, then yes, that's a, we would consider that a new license, so if we were at the cap, you would not be able to do that.
Okay, and is there?
Strictly by location for each permit.
Okay, and then is, like, we're, we're talking about two different, like wildly different areas, so we have the downtown, which if you look at the numbers on your, on page ten of the PowerPoint, is operating at fifty, so if we're talking about a ten percent cap, really, there, I mean, if we count the illegally operating Airbnbs that are still, still operating, they're, they're pretty much at a ten percent cap, but then if we were to look at St. Elmo and we were to have a ten percent cap, that would blow that neighborhood wide, wide open and really have a poor impact on that neighborhood, for, like, for the historic district right now, if we were to take the fifteen operating illegally Airbnbs and we were to award ten licenses, we would be at a cap, correct, with, and we would be able to shut five down, and the neighborhood wouldn't change at all drastically other than, right, other than the illegals. other than the illegals. But if, but St. Elmo, if you were to put a ten percent cap on that, that would allot for another thirty Airbnbs and really jeopardize the integrity of that neighborhood. Ballpark number. So, is there an opportunity, I guess what I'm asking, is there an opportunity to split those historic districts and put different caps? I, I mean, I am in favor of a cap. Just let me be, be clear. I, I think that there needs to be, there does need to be a cap. But I, I think those, I think we do need to split them up and look at the individual needs of the neighborhoods.
All right, Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. The, several questions have already been answered, so I'll just ask the question, I guess, how would you form a district if your area doesn't have a district for, to put the limit in? I mean, I...
So, in the future, essentially, you'd create an overlay district, similar, you know, we have overlay districts around some of our corridors and that. But basically, you would set the legal boundaries of a district, and then you would institute the cap in that specific district. So, that's the model that Savannah has taken with their approach, is they created individual overlay districts throughout the city and then instituted caps within those districts.
So, we could put an overlay district in Council District Six?
Yes.
Can we start working on that? And I would like one percent. Or half percent. Thank you.
Counselor Tucker?
I'm laughing because I'm messing with Mayor Pro Tim. He already has about ten in his group. And I'm looking at the map and I'm asking the same thing as Bruce. I think it would be beneficial for all of us to understand what Airbnb... That we have in our areas. But I will say, and I mentioned it a while ago, about nuisance during COVID, when we was having these parties and we was calling, people would get Airbnbs and you're saying sixteen people, they'll have thirty, and this was in District Four, it's close to a hundred people. And sadly, when you have, you're saying sixteen, that's, that's, yeah, that, that's really setting us up for failure and possibly some issues where we have to call the police. So, definitely pull that number down. I, I don't think that's a good number. We need to be really specific with those individuals that, I think per, per bedroom would probably be better. So, but please get that information to all of us, what Airbnbs we have in our district.
All right, Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Pruitt, if we were to reduce the percentage from ten to five, are there districts that would immediately lose Airbnbs?
So, to, to my knowledge, the only one that would have the legally operating permitted rentals over a five percent cap would be the downtown historic district. It's my understanding that those over the cap would be allowed to continue to operate since they already have their permits and are legally operating today.
Well, that, that would be my question, is if I, if they already have the permit, is there something that we can put into the ordinance that says when that permit, if that permit expires or goes to somebody else, that number, I mean, it goes down to the five percent. I, I, I agree with the five percent, and I want us to, you know, let's, let's look at that. But I also don't want to put people out of business that have Airbnbs and that they followed the proper procedure when they established their Airbnb. So, let's, let's take a look at the language and make sure that as these things change, that's when the numbers have to come down. And once it gets to that five percent, that's it. If you would do that, I think that would be helpful.
All right, Counselor Kogle?
So, if, if we know that fifteen Airbnbs are already operating illegally, what's the process, why are they still operating illegally? If we, if we, if we know that they're operating illegally? What's the process to either license them or shut them down?
So, we, again, we've, I got this data last week from the Visitors Bureau, so I haven't even gone through and you've verified the addresses and looked at the rentals online. But how we work it now is if, when we get a complaint from a citizen that there's an Airbnb next door to me and they're creating these problems. Of course, we first go check and see if it's licensed. If it's unlicensed, then we go to the unit, try to make contact with somebody. We look at the ownership of that. A lot of them are owned out of town. If they are out of town, we do send certified mail to them, you know, notifying them they have a period of time to get into compliance. If they fail to do that, we'll continue to reach out to them and, you know, try to issue citations. Did confirm with the city attorney that we are, you know, if push comes to shove, shove at the end of, end of the line, that, you know, we could, just like any other business establishment operating illegally, we could, you know, barricade or padlock the doors to prevent future operation of that. So, that would be, you know, if we can't ever reach somebody to cite them or they're an out-of-town owner, that's, you know, kind of the last straw that we have.
So, what's the, what's the timeline on, if, I mean, if you found out that there's fifteen, say on Monday, what's the timeline to reach out? I mean, that seems like a lot of grace.
So, you know, we, yes, I could go, you know, reach out and start knocking on doors. We were trying to get this new procedure and everything in place before we started proactively reaching out to those rental units.
Okay. All right.
Well, it doesn't sound like we're going to be ready for a second reading next week. If we're talking about changing numbers or reducing these caps, changing possibly the sticker requirement, maybe eliminate that, change the occupant load per bedroom. So, it sounds like it's going to be February before this comes back. But I do want to offer folks here a chance to talk, Mayor, if...
No, absolutely. Only thing we would ask is if you have a spokesperson, to let them come first and, and try not to repeat what somebody else has said. If you have a separate issue, we want to hear it. But just to, so you don't have to sit here any longer, we don't repeat the same issues. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, I was just trying to be clear on this occupancy, occupant load, and you said so, so many per bedroom. Or, I'm trying to be clear in my mind if it's talking about the number of visitors in the house versus the number of people who will sleep in the house. I, I don't know why I'm thinking, the intent is, is two different things. You know, it's like, in this room, we have a capacity. And that capacity may be three hundred. In a house, the capacity may be sixteen. That's not to imply that or think that sixteen people would try and sleep in that house. And so, I was just trying to be clear. What, what do we mean when we talk about?
And I think the biggest challenge is, is that just like anything else, you've got some people that operate Airbnbs and do it the right way. They've got one, you know, they, they may lease it to somebody's mama who's out at Fort Benning, and they're going to bring their buddies over. And you're going to have twelve, thirteen, fourteen guys having a home-cooked meal. Then you got the other folks that are out there, just soon as they open the door, they start throwing a party for twenty people in there. And I think that's, that's the challenge, because I agree with you. There's a capacity for a dinner party or something like that, but then there's, there's also people crashing at the house and staying there for most of the night.
Yeah, because I, you know, I don't want, if we don't carefully or provide clarity, you may have someone who tried to sleep sixteen people in a three-bedroom house, because you said, we said sixteen. And I, you know, I want to be clear, we are, it's not permission to sleep sixteen people.
Well, it might be now. That's what we're going to look at revising, per bedroom. Two occupants per bedroom would be two persons sleeping in that room.
That, that's, that would be clarity.
All right. Anybody in the audience that wants to come up and be heard, for, for or against, come on up, give your name and address for the record, please.
Do y'all want to take a breath? It's been, it's been a long evening. My name is Nancy Gordy, and I live in the Park District. And so, one point that I would like to make is, I do thank y'all that y'all see that we need a cap. We have been working under the 2019 ordinance for four or five years, and we have not gotten any help. We don't, our neighborhoods don't get help. Our neighborhoods are historic because we made them historic. I've lived there forty years, the people in there. In order to keep them historic, we don't need ten percent more in our neighborhood. So, the fact that several of you agree that we need a cap, and thank God Gary Allen, he would just love to have a one percent. And, and I researched this, and there are cities that have a two percent cap. But it seems like every time that we come and talk to y'all, it goes off into another area of the ordinance, and then it goes to another area, and we keep having to come back. So, our group has dwindled down from thirty people to probably five or six, because they keep tired of coming and waiting and coming and waiting. It's not working. So, for tonight, since this is a text amendment, and I hear several people that are interested in five percent or one percent, can't we vote on the five percent tonight and get that settled, because it is a text amendment? And then, in February, after y'all research how many people stay in a house, because sixteen people do stay in a one-bedroom house. Yes, they do, because they're trying to save money. So, so that is, that is another issue. So, there are several issues that are in the ornament, ordinance. So, can we, if y'all are available, if y'all like the five percent, can we vote? Since it's just a text amendment, can we vote tonight, say five percent, take that off the ordinance?
Sure. If, if a counselor wants to make a motion to do that, to reduce it...
Gary, tell them one percent.
This is first reading.
All right. Well, there is, there is a motion to... That's all right. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you. What you're asking is a five percent everywhere, and I think that's what Counselor Kogle wanted to have a different percentages in different districts.
Under my understanding, we were starting with the historic districts first. And then, after, we're doing the foundation. So, after that, then any other one that wants to come in can put in for it afterwards. We were not under the pressure, it was a citywide, but it could be citywide, and then you could add on there. So, five percent was for the historic district.
Well, and I think, Ms. Gordy, that, that the point was, there's a couple of, of course, with different levels already in existence in the different historic districts, was that there were some variables that needed to be continued to be vetted. And, and some of those...
What variables?
Well, one is like, there's already some over the five percent in the, in the downtown historic district.
And that would make those...
And there would have to be, there would have to be, I think, what they were asking for was some discussion, so that they could, everybody feel comfortable about passing a number that worked everywhere. I don't, I'm not advocating for ten percent. I'm just saying, explaining to you why I think there's a little bit of hesitancy on party council to go straight five percent right now.
So, if there was a five percent in the historic district, in my opinion, that will knock out the fifteen illegal houses that have been there illegal since 2019. So, the council and the city has not moved forward, knowing these houses are illegal. Because, like Ryan said, they're only cited if somebody complains. So...
Excuse me just a second.
I don't know why, for what reason, and Clifton Fay might, couldn't, a lot of severies are out of town.
Counselor Kogle?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I will stand by my, that, I understand that we're talking about the historic districts, but the dis, the historic districts are so drastically unique and different that they need to be, that they need to be addressed individually. And so, ten percent or five percent in the downtown historic district throws them at twenty-two percent and throws them way, way over. And so, what's to say, like, we need to iron out some of those details of, what's to say that Airbnb owner Bruce Huff, you know, goes on vacation or, or, God forbid, has some family emergency that he can't go and renew his business license and loses it, now, now we're, we're down. So, like, there's, there's just, there's a lot of things that need to be ironed out before we commit to a five percent. Because five percent, it is a lot easier, and, and I think there's a lot of historic district people here from both, from both areas. It is a lot easier for you to go down than it is to go up.
Correct. So, you want to cut these numbers in half?
No, I'm just saying that they need to be, they need to be separated.
We tried to separate them, and we were told by Clifton Fay, they could not be separated. They had to be the same.
Now, the preference is to keep it uniform, but, I mean, you can certainly deviate from that. It might be subject to challenge. It might not be.
I just think, I think five percent's a little bit too stringent.
Of course you do.
And that's your discretion, Counselor, Counselor Huff?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney and Director Pruitt, is it possible, based on this part of the Park District, Wherea-Copa, they seem to be pretty set on their five percent?
Correct.
So, in working toward next week or whenever, two weeks from now, whenever, can we go ahead and put five percent in for them while we're working with everybody else, as far as a working document?
That would be great. Don't y'all think that'd be good? So, how many people in the historic district want more than five percent? How many people won't in the historic district, won't five percent?
But...
Ms. Gordy, Ms. Gordy, if you would, address your, address your comments to the council.
Yeah, just for a working document, we know.
So, you want to...
Counsel, Counselor, Counselor Kogle?
Okay.
Still needs time to work toward her district. So, the part here, you all seem to be set on five. So, let's just toss that to Director Pruitt, that the Wherea-Copa Park District-St. Elmo is good with five percent. You all can go back and discuss that. He can take that in his plans and moving forward to see if we're going to have to legally do it uniformly. Uniformity has to be on the table, or we need to move forward and split it at five percent of different, different percentages across... Uniformity has to be on the table or we need to move forward and split it at five percent of different, different percentages across the board. But that's gonna have to be something worked out by Director Pruitt and I'm sure the council is here and the city, city attorney.
Um, so what's your say on this, Clifton Fay?
Uh, my say is not to vote on it tonight, but I would recommend you think about a uniform percentage, whether it's five, whether it's seven, or whether it's ten percent. You can't, you could look at, uh, districts individually, but then you run the risk of some sort of an equal protection challenge or a due process challenge. So as your lawyer, I'm telling you to try to keep it uniform at one percentage in each district, whatever that may be.
Mr. Uh, City Manager.
I'm just, um, I, I heard that Councilor Huff, uh, at some point, uh, talked about a percentage for your district. And, and I, I just want to make the point to, um, to, to Councilor Kogel's, uh, point about a different number, perhaps based on a, um, historic district or based on a council district. And so your council district, um, is about twenty-five thousand. People, I believe. And I don't know exactly how many households, but let's say if that was twenty-five thousand households. If you had five percent, you would have, you would have the capacity for one thousand two hundred and fifty Airbnbs. At ten percent, you would have the capacity for twenty-five hundred Airbnbs. Do you want twenty-five hundred? Do you want twelve fifty? Uh, and so if it's, I, I just, it's something to think about. And, and, and I think, I, I, I think I hear you saying, one historic district is much larger than the other. And so five percent may work in the smaller historic district. But it may not work in a larger historic district because the numbers are gonna be different. I know.
The question I have as City Manager is it, could, do we have to use percentages?
I, I, I don't, no, I, I've not.
You can use numbers that roughly approximate a percentage.
So.
It, it would be, it would be less troublesome than a percentage, if, if, if we could just use numbers.
Let me jump in right here.
The numbers you're giving off.
Yeah, let me jump in right here. It was brought to my attention, Mr. City Manager, by Director Pruitt a little bit earlier in the conversation, that he would sit down and tell me what was in District Three, so that we could subdivide so that Werah Coba could get five percent and then I could find out where I had problems, where we could go and do whatever we needed to do to keep that five percent in place, but not for the whole district, but for different sections of the district.
Yeah, yeah, and I was just throwing that out because I'm.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, that's a good point.
If you, you, you need to think about it before you. What that means for a council district or what that means for, uh, an overlay district. How large will the overlay be and, and if you put five percent or ten percent on, it's, is it, I, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, and we got to figure it out to the point of keeping numbers down. Okay, thank you. And then give Councilor Kogel time to work it out, because I, 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 I see where you're coming from because where you located and the river and everything that goes on downtown, there's a lot going on down there. And at the, uh, Werah Coba-St. Elmo District, you know, it's, it's removed from that, so they have a different way of looking at things and a different way they would like to do business on that side, so.
Everybody wants to rent by the park. If you look up that Airbnb or VRBO and you read the ads, one block from park, one block from park, one bar, block from park. So we are getting really inundated with people coming. All right, we just sold a house on my street that somebody from out of town called, wanted the house because it had a pool. He offered fifteen thousand dollars over the asking price in order to get that house. You know? Fortunately, the people owning don't want Airbnbs and they did not sell it to him.
Well, we're gonna turn it back over to Director Pruitt and get him to work on that and see if we can't get you some satisfaction.
Well, I appreciate, um, y'all listening, um, to us. I would also like to point out that we have a housing shortage. So every house that is bought to be an Airbnb discriminates against families that are coming in and trying to buy a house for their family to live in. So we are taken away from families and military families. We have a lot of military i- in our, um, community. And they want to come in, but they're outbid by Airbnb companies. You know, my other concern is this, the city is not complying with the twenty nineteen ordinance that was passed. So if you're already not complying with this ordinance, um, because you don't have to staff and you're only doing it by complaint basis and people don't complain and you know that you have three hundred and eighty illegal houses. If they were legal, the city would be making three thousand dollars or maybe even ten thousand dollars a month if they were legal. So we have major issues. Uh, we have one person that is in charge of this. So every time we get a, ask a question, we get, well, that, that's under codes and inspection, that's under codes and inspections. So when we asked Ryan, um, we asked him why that these places are not cited. And his answer is, no, no complaint, we're not citing them.
We hear you, we hear you. We just need to give him time to go back and work some things out.
All right, so hopefully, I appreciate y'all listening. I, I appreciate y'all, um, seeing how that we are in our neighborhood and, um, especially you, Mr. Huff, because we did add in the other historic districts that you asked about. We appreciate that. Um, we wrote you all letters. Mr. House is not here, I hope you're listening. He's the only one that replied. I thank him for that. Uh, I also feel like Mr. Huff is, understands the ordinance because last time he was the only one that said to the council, what do you mean, we didn't put a cap on this ordinance? So in twenty nineteen, y'all, y'all, there should have been a cap on it. I mean, there are a lot of things in here which other people are gonna come up and tell you that are not being taken care of because we don't, you don't have the staff. So why do you go up to ten percent? Why do you add more? You can't even handle what we have. And I thank y'all. That's all I have to say.
Well, let's, let's keep in mind, this is a new, a new ordinance, it's a work in progress and, and we're, we're gonna get there. We're, Columbus George is not used to Airbnb, so we're, we're gonna get there. And I'm, I'm not trying to talk down what you said. I appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments.
So will we.
I think we're going to, I think we are going, council's going to shift to numbers instead of percentages, so. I, I think that's my prerogative and several others around the table have said that, so I, I think that's a good direction to go in.
That's right, and we have Midtown behind us and, um, and we have some letters. John, do you want to share those letters or? Yeah.
Well, you could give them to the clerk and we'll, we'll be glad to disseminate them around to council.
Everybody's email.
We, we have them then, we all have them. Just because we don't respond doesn't mean we didn't get it, so.
So they are in there, Midtown, um, is, is behind, um, us. So that's an important concept, um, that. So, um, I, uh, realize that there are some people that have already made up their mind and they want the ten percent. Um, and I, I hate that, I hate for, to hear that from the council. Um, before we even get here, their minds already made up. That's a disappointment to me. Um, so, um, with that said, thank y'all.
Thank you.
When will we have this meeting? Because we continuously, we've been put off since September.
I think it'll be back on, uh, back up before us on the.
It may be back on first reading in February.
February fourteenth would be the next.
If some of these things are ironed out.
Yeah. But we'll be glad to, we'll be glad to talk to you between now and then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? If you would give your name and address, please. And before you get started, oh, oh, sorry, go ahead, go ahead. Councilor Davis stepped away.
All right. Good evening, I'm Barona Campbell. I live at seven sixteen First Avenue in the downtown historic district. Thank you for giving us a chance to come before you and express our concerns. And, uh, it, it's a, it's a, it's, it's a very, uh, sensitive issue to us, of course, because I, along with, um, a lot of my neighbors here, we make our homes, our personal homes in these areas and we put our, of course, blood, sweat and tears, everybody does, into their homes. But, uh, these old homes that require, uh, a capital input of at least twice what you bought it for, uh, sometimes, it, it's, uh, it's near and dear to our hearts and this is very, very important to us. A few things that I want to address myself as a homeowner myself, not speaking for the downtown area. I think it's, it's, it's hard to summarize because, you know, each person, it's their own personal investment. And so I feel a little bit uncomfortable speaking for others, but I can't, I do believe there are a lot of people who share my concerns. And, um, thank you very much for the thoughtful comments made tonight already, yeah, Councilor Davis, Councilor Allen, um, City Attorney Fay, because it's several things I find really concerning about this. First of all, I would like to know, ha, is council aware of the total amount of parcels? I know Ryan, I think, gave them to us earlier, four, four hundred and forty, I think, was the count, which is what they base that ten percent off of. I went to, um, the ART GIS that the tax assessor provides and I pulled within the downtown historic district, actually four hundred and eighty-five parcels. But is council aware then that because we're zoned historic, we have several use classes in the historic district? And so of those, there are one hundred and seventeen commercial entities just in our little twenty-five blocks already. There are, uh, one, I'm sorry, thirty-two, thirty-eight, forty-one, uh, forty-three exempt properties there already. And besides C three, there are three C fours and one C five. So there are a lot of uses already that crowd into the HIST zoning. We're not just residential there. And so if you take these hundred and twenty-one commercial, three historic and forty-three exempt, you're up to a hundred and sixty-seven in our twenty-five blocks. So if you add to that another fifty, I believe, or the existing, if you go on, uh, the American Planning Association, I, I should say, I'm a certified planner by trade. I hold American Institute Certified Planning designation. So that means you either have a master's in five years as a planner or ten years as a planner before they even let you sit for the test. So I definitely have some planning knowledge, not that I'm an expert, these guys are the experts, for sure. Um, but I do know my way around the APA. And the APA, uh, recently has published a lot about Airbnbs because they are not a very compatible use to residential communities. The health of a residential community could not be gauged by an increasing number of Airbnbs. You have strangers coming in every day. Nobody in an Airbnb runs a background check. There's no mandatory sexual predator reporting for people who come in and rent an Airbnb. And if you have families with small children, again, a sign of a healthy neighborhood, you know, aren't they supposed to lock their children in the backyard all the time because of a constant stream of strangers? So a few things that I like to say that I personally find issue with is the twenty-four hour requirement. That's just an invitation for a house party. They may as well just rent it for an hour, in my personal opinion. Sixteen people? I have six bedrooms, four and a half baths, and I wouldn't dare try to see, keep sixteen people in my house overnight. That is inordinate number of people to be in a small house. Most of the Airbnbs are small houses. And I'd like the city to consider that we, you know, everything's tight. But I am a graduate of the Citizens Law Enforcement Academy here at the city. I've done a ride along with a policeman. I've gone through months and months and months of them explaining to us how hard their job is. And when they hear bullets and sirens, I run the other way and they run to it. Okay, so I have a lot of respect for our law enforcement and they're already stretched to the maximum. And I can remember the night I went on the ride along and we went to domestics. He's like, are you getting out? And I'm like, you've got a bulletproof vest, I'm not getting out. I wouldn't get out at the domestics, it's scary. And so you have people drinking and partying and who knows what. We have no criminal background on these people. Not to mention the fact that when you're in a residential area, you look at your neighbor's house, you see if something funny is going on. That's what leads to a healthy neighborhood. And, you know, with strangers in a majority of the, uh, parcels there, how is it that you're supposed to even know if those people belong there or not? Just before Christmas, I don't mean to be dramatic, but there was a beautiful young lady who was abducted by FedEx driver or, or some delivery company driver. And that man killed that child and dumped her in the woods somewhere. All I'm saying is, please recognize that strangers on a constant stream right next to your home might be allowed because we're in the historic district or it might be allowed, period. And people really love coming to the downtown area. Why? Because we have a beautiful downtown. It's on every Chamber of Commerce advertisement. It's on every convention and bureau, convention and visitors bureau advertisement. We're right next to Whitewater. People want to have the convenience of renting in our neighborhood. But, you know, we had, we do have hotels, we do have bed and breakfast. Airbnb is not the only solution to this. I want to say that I appreciate the people who are my neighbors, who have Airbnbs in their own neighborhood. I feel like they do care about what's happening and going on and they're just a street over. But we don't have any way to regulate that. Perhaps we could, I don't know. I think there might be a legal challenge to, um, saying only locals can own Airbnbs. But I just, I appreciate your comments about the undesirable nature of these Airbnbs. And personally, I wish we could limit it to one percent. Um, because it's not what makes a healthy neighborhood. And we, you know, twenty years ago or in the sixties, when this zoning was put into place for historic, it allowed a use of commercial, a mix of commercial and residential because the thought was that people would live above their businesses. And then everybody here knows that the historic districts back then were something very different. It was tumbleweeds after dark, maybe twenty years ago. And now we're building a neighborhood, where families are moving in. I just ask you, please, don't let someone put their, the heel of their boot on the throat of this neighborhood that's trying to come around and be strong and be vibrant. Um, you can, it's really a choice, do you support the residential uses in this area? Or do you support every other commercial venture that wishes to come into this area? And again, we're almost already past a saturation point, depending on who you ask, at thirty percent already of commercial use. So please consider carefully and I thank you so much for your comments and thank you for letting me speak. And I've probably forgotten to say some things. I know I have other neighbors here, so I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Barona. Councilor Davis?
Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm part and partial towards the hotel industry for many reasons. But, um, you know, and I have to ask this question. I, I, you, you know, when we're talking about these numbers, percentages, uh, from, I guess, from a perspective could be confusing, but actually knowing the actual numbers and how that relates, and I'm sure you're talking about some of these others who are not operating appropriately now who are not operating appropriately now and then falling in line and, I guess, do what they need to do to be, uh, compliant. You know, I'm, I'm just curious, and I'll just throw this in there. I don't, you know, I, Ms. City Attorney, this is probably in your arena, but when do you or do you get in a position of creating a monopoly in areas for certain people or people versus, uh, allowing a, a, a more of a free market type situation? Uh, you know, not, I don't know, but I'm just asking, um, with this, I know that there's people that own a lot of these, and they do a lot of business. Uh, how, with the decisions we're making, how does that impact the opportunity for others to do business as well? When, when does it cross the line of a discriminatory type nature in doing business? Now, I'm all for, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm partial to the hotel industry. So, um, I have my own thoughts on Airbnbs and, and these rentals. But, uh, I think you have to ask that. I don't know if it applies here. I really don't. Ms. City Manager, you started along that line of the numbers, the actual putting numbers out there versus percentages. And it kind of struck me. Maybe we're not, and if that's not the case, then, you know, does a percent really matter?
Of course, I don't know the answer to that question tonight. Why, and I don't know if I'll have it two weeks from now, but let me just say, when you talk about monopoly, I mean, the only thing that I, I can think of, just off the cuff, would be, a single owner or entity would not be able to own more than a certain number within a certain radius, number of miles or whatever, you know.
That would not be permissible.
It would not, well-
You can't, you can't say, Columbus can't pass an ordinance saying there will only be three Hilton Gardens in, ends in Columbus, Georgia, and you can't pass an ordinance saying Ms. Gordy can only own five Airbnbs, so.
That's why I'm glad you're a lawyer, you know. Uh, I, I'm just saying that would be the only way. I, I think you could make sure there's not a monopoly, but obviously that's not a legal way to do things.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it, my question is to, to, uh-
Ryan?
Ryan. Sorry. Um, what's the timeline? If, if I want to open an Airbnb, I go file, uh, an application with you. So what's the timeline when I can open?
So when you come apply, uh, of course, you have to complete a background check first. So you go to the police department or other law enforcement agency, complete that background check, bring us all the paperwork. Uh, we review it, make sure everything's in compliance. We will also send a building inspector to the proposed rental, um, you know, to ensure that there are smoke detectors, that it's, you know, generally habitable, uh, for people. Um, then they sign off on it, and then we approve the permit from us. So that's, you know, only a couple-day process typically. And then from there, you can go to the business license, and they turn it right around as well. So it's not a very lengthy process.
Okay, my, but, and, and in that interim, are you sending notices to the adjacent property owners?
We do not do that currently.
You do not? Okay, I would like that added in, and I would like to do three hundred feet around the property. And the reason I'm saying that is, just sitting here through the discussion, basically what we're doing is we're allowing a business to go in a neighborhood without the privilege or the, or the, without the requirement of a rezoning. So they can just go and open a business, and nobody knows the difference. I mean, I had one in mind. That's why I got up to sit a while ago. Uh, neighbors called me and there's a party going on, you know? They didn't even know the lady had moved out of town and, and put it on, listed it on Airbnb. Of course, she didn't have a license and all that, but, um, and I think you went after her to your credit and got her straight, and she had to follow up and, and file all the right paperwork. The, the, the concern to me is, is that we're, we're allowing businesses to locate, and we're, nobody's notified. Nope, the neighbors don't know. All of a sudden, they're open. And I, I would like for us to slow that down a little bit, uh, require proper notification to the neighbors, allow them to, uh, have some type of say, come to council, whatever, whatever you want to set it up as. Uh, and just have a hearing, basically. I, I think we need to do that. And I'm, I wish we hadn't got off on the foot, but, you know, that's my two cents. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Kogle?
Um, thanks, Verona, for all the, the words. Um, you know, if you do factor in, just to back us up, um, to the, the parcels, I mean, that does change the percentages a lot. Um, so I, I, I think going back and if, when we're, when we're looking at this as a council, um, just making a very clear number that's very black and white, that we can say, yes, we're over, or yes, we're, we're under, doesn't leave any, um, it, it will not leave any room for, um, gray areas where we're at like four point three percent or, uh, four point nine percent. And whether we round up or round down is however you learn how to do fourth grade math. You know, uh, so I, I think when we do revisit this, um, I think just if we can really focus on those numbers rather than percentages. Thanks, Verona.
Okay, any other questions around the table? Will any other people in the audience want to come up? We've got a couple.
Good evening. I'm Robin Tramarki. I live at seven twenty Broadway. And I am currently the, uh, the current president of Historic District Preservation Society. The, um, H D P S Board of Directors has voted twice on the cap in the past six months. In August, uh, if I recall correctly, Mr. Pruitt's numbers for the cap is based on three hundred and thirty residential parcels, which would have been thirty-three Airbnbs or short-term rentals, which is about where we are now in terms of legal ones. And so we voted to support that. Well, now that the number is four hundred and forty parcels, ten percent is forty-four units, and the Board of Directors felt that was too high. So we voted to, um, support the PAC number at five percent, which is, which is twenty-two, and we are already above that. And those that are currently operating will stay operating anyway, so all those numbers, none of those numbers change. Um, it's, but we support the five percent cap or the cap for districts because that, and not citywide, because that will prevent concentration of those numbers in our district, the Park District. You know, we don't want a five percent cap citywide, and ninety percent of those numbers are in downtown district and the Park District. Um, another thing I'd like to bring up just very quickly, that's my understanding that, uh, Mr. Pruitt's department does not have an avenue for handling out-of-town owners who are in violation. Um, like, he, he has avenues to deal with, in-town, local ownership and this and that. Um, and I can't really speak to that. It's something we had in a conversation once. Um, as I do recall, I'm saying that it was difficult for him to deal with violators who are out-of-town owners. Um, and I believe that, oh, and one more thing, a, a few neighbors have brought up, if we could ask the question, there could be, um, a stop or moratorium put on, uh, new licenses, new applications for Airbnb licenses until this, um, proposed amendment has been settled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. Anybody else want to come up?
I'm John Stewart. Live at sixteen oh eight Springer Street. And, uh, I am chairman of the Board of Directors for the Park District. Uh, or where I come, we say, say now, Mo Preservation Society. I have two pages to read to you. I'm not going to do that. Saves some time. But I, there are a couple of key points here I would like to make. Uh, we were-
And I would ask you to not to, not to repeat what's already been-
I, I-
Gotcha.
That's exactly why I'm here.
Thank you.
The, uh, Park District was actually formed in nineteen ninety-four and then incorporated in nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, there are bylaws. I want to read the bylaw, the very first one. And the purpose of the organization, as stated in our bylaws, is to help preserve, protect, and enhance the historical status and significance of the district and for the protection of the rights of the property owners and the values of their property. And this does apply to what we're talking about tonight. We have, um, a letter from, um, Midtown Inc. in support of the five percent, uh, cap. And I would like to present that as evidence tonight. The Board of Directors says the same thing, as well as PAC, so we're, make sure we're on the same page.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Clerk, uh, you can, do you have a copy of that Midtown letter or? Got it? Yeah, I got it. Thank you, sir.
Frank, if you would state your name and address.
My name is Frank Carpenter, and I live at seven thirty-eight Broadway. I did want to just say that if we're having a hard time figuring out how to apply a percentage cap, there are cities that have established a rule that only homeowner-occupied, uh, parcels can be, um, made Airbnb. That was the initial concept of Airbnb, was for people to be able to rent out rooms in their homes, people who needed to supplement their income in order to keep their homes, um, or people who enjoyed hosting people in the community. I love hosting people. I don't really want them under my roof necessarily, but I love showing people around our city. I'm proud of our city and what it's accomplished and what, what many of you have participated in accomplishing for this city. But I don't want to share my house or my home, and I'm, I'm getting to the point where I'm not enjoying sharing my neighborhood that much. Um, it just is becoming overwhelming. I would, given the fact that we a- apparently already have fifty, uh, short-term vacation rentals in our neighborhood, um, I would like for you to consider a moratorium on any new licenses until you can all settle on how to, um, come up with a definition of, uh, this text amendment. I would appreciate it if you would consider that.
Counselor Davis? Hang on, getting to you, getting to you. All right, Counselor Kogle?
Uh, I'll make a motion to make a moratorium.
For how long?
Uh, thirty days.
All right, there's a motion to-
That'll have to, that, we'll have to put that in an ordinance. That's fine. You can request it. We'll have to bring it back in an ordinance.
All right, well, I think the council has requested an ordinance for a ninety-day moratorium, uh, until, uh, so that we can kind of get-
If we did thirty, can we extend it after?
Well, if it's done with an ordinance.
What I, what I, what I don't want to put somebody who's doing construction on their Airbnb in the predicament of, like, losing out on ninety days of, of revenue if we can't figure it out.
Yeah, if, if they've got a permit already for work, then they're going to be protected. But need to bring a first reading ordinance, uh, next, next week.
If they're protected already for doing work, then, then sure, ninety days. But I, I just don't want somebody to get into the spot where they're going to be delayed in their income for ninety days.
No, if they have a building permit, they would already be protected.
All right, well, the, the motion, unless it's been amended, was for ninety days for a moratorium. Uh, is there, was there a second? Okay, there is a second to the, well, to the motion. Let Counselor Davis speak.
Look, it's either, I, I, I think there's some things I'm okay with, with some of the residents concerned in areas, okay? But then there's some, still some question marks, and we talked about a few things tonight. I don't know if we're going to get this thing ironed out tonight or unless we just vote on what's on the table, and that's not what I'm hearing from everybody. There's some diff- different aspects. So, I mean, the idea of the moratorium, that's a good idea because you just stop. Let's just stop and figure this thing out and get all these things we talked about, come back with something solid and address all these issues versus piecemeal in it. That might be a better approach, but it stops everything where it is right now. I guess you could delay it on first reading again, but, you know, you continue and continue until we get some of these things ironed out. I've heard a lot of stuff here tonight. There's a lot of thoughts. Um, you know, and it, i- i- if we come back next week and it's on second reading, you know, we're not addressing any of the things that, that, that's been a concern that we're talking about, so. And we may in some areas and may not in some other areas. So, I mean, I, I, you know, that's, I think that's the idea of the, the moratorium. I mean, you could continue it on first reading and, until you get that worked out. But I think what I hear people is they don't want, they want it slowed down. They want it stopped. And then, you know, they want us to figure out something that works in their areas.
I would, I would, I would recommend that you table the ordinance on the table. And if you want to bring back a moratorium next week, uh, consent agenda, first reading for ninety days, then you can bring this, this back at a later time.
Well, I, and this is just a question regarding the moratorium. So you've got thirty-five who've, who've, who've came in, they've come in to get business license. And you know fifteen are out there operating without a business license. And do you want those fifteen to come and get legal? Or you want them to just continue doing, because if there's a moratorium and they were thinking about getting legal, now they can't get legal because there's a moratorium, so I just keep doing what I'm doing. So I, is a moratorium-
But to ask a question, though, if we, if it just was delayed, you could have not only those fifteen, but five or six others go start that process before we get to that, uh, before we get it worn, worked out. And I think that the, the challenge there is if it ends up at five percent and you're already over the five percent and you've had those additional fifteen and three or four more, now you've got all these folks grandfathered in. And I, I'm not the attorney. I would think, I know it's more of a pain to do the moratorium, but it's probably more, you know, finite that you'd be able to-
It's going to take you two weeks to put in a moratorium. You got to have two readings. So I suggest you put that on first reading next week, and then-
There is a, uh, excuse me, ma'am, there is a motion on the table. There is no, there is a second. Counsel, uh, Mayor Protem, uh, seconded it. Any more discussion to him?
Would, would you repeat the motion so we know exactly what we're going to repeat the, um, moratorium, the moratorium for ninety days?
Well, it's just being requested. It's like a counselor making a request for an ordinance. It will be on first reading next week unless y'all object, and then you vote on it in February. It'll be a ninety-day moratorium on these applications.
Counselor Crabbe?
Technically, aren't, aren't you already over your quota? So technically, you're already in a moratorium. They can't give any more, um, licenses for you. Oh, there's no, okay.
There's no cap on the books currently.
Okay. I thought there was like a twenty percent.
Mr. Hughley, did you have something?
First reading on the thirty-first, and then we'll hear from those who want to be heard on first reading.
Sure, just like any first reading, on the moratorium ordinance.
And so then we're going to have all of the, a, a consent agenda, and then-
Well, it'll, it'll be part of the consent agenda. The first reading be at the end.
Yeah, I, I, so we, we might do a tour next week, maybe.
Uh, Madam Clerk, did you have something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, having a first reading on a consent agenda, that goes against the concept of the consent agenda.
I think, yeah, they, we were talking about that just a moment ago. Well, doesn't, doesn't have to. Well, I think the Mayor Protem.
Well, I guess a legal question. I, I thought when we voted in a moratorium, it went in effect immediately. It wasn't an ordinance that we had to have hearings and all that on.
You got to put it in an ordinance for it to have the force of law. So, we've always done them, whether it's a zoning ordinance for a certain category. It's always been an ordinance. Is that right, Mr. Johnson?
All right, Counselor Davis.
You know, Mr. Mayor, you talked about those fifteen people. I mean, the question was asked too. Here's another reason that, one of the thoughts in all this, that, that the process needs, I think, needs to be cleaned up too. I think that question was asked and we're not sure who those fifteen people are, but we, somebody does. But that, that process needs to be cleaned up in itself. So, it's even more the reason to try to, to fix all this. That, you know, it's better to fix it all at once than to piecemeal it together.
All right, Counselor Crabbe.
I think that Ryan wanted this to come together so that he could lay out his plan on how to go after those, those fifteen. But would we have to, instead of doing a moratorium and having to come back with a first and second reading, couldn't we amend this to change the, you know, five percent to the number? And then by the time we come back for, for this, to vote on this, we just make an amendment on that day that we vote to say are the new number instead of, you know, five percent or, you know, we plug, we make an amendment that it's not five percent, that it's, you know, seven percent or three percent or, you know, or an actual number of forty-five or whatever.
You could do that on second reading next week if you wanted to.
And then that would make, that would process it faster doing it that way as an amendment than creating a moratorium and creating a new first reading, second reading process.
And you may want to do both. I'm just throwing that out there. You can finish this with seven percent by vote next week and then also do a first reading moratorium.
So, anybody is affected by the, you know, like Bruce and Joey? So, maybe that's, that maybe that's an option.
Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Mayor, there are a number of issues in this ordinance in addition to the five percent that I think we need to address. And I recognize that it's nine thirty PM and that there are a lot of people in this audience that are, have been here since five thirty and they're waiting to make a presentation to the council. I also recognize that there are a number of people here, including some of us around this table, that want to make sure that when we vote on this and when we adopt this ordinance, it is, it's something that we can live with, that we can enforce, that our neighbors can live with. And I, I, I think that we need to make a slowly, if you will, on this issue. And to that end, once this motion is resolved around the table, I'm going to make a motion that the work session on next Tuesday be changed to a business meeting so that we can handle a number of these issues that are here. I, I also would recommend if the city manager would entertain this. There are, I think, five or six presentations that are on your agenda to be presented to us tonight. Those can be presented next Tuesday morning in a business session or whatever. I, I'm just trying to be cognizant of the time that we've asked these citizens to be here. I want to get through as much of the business as we can. But I, I do think that we need to be very careful with this ordinance, that we get it right and that we do what we need to do. And so, a- as I said, once the motion that's on the table is resolved, I will make a motion that next week's meeting be a regular business meeting.
All right. Sure.
Yeah, I would, I would, that's totally appropriate, Counselor Thomas's motion to make it a it can be a short business meeting if you still want to do a tour.
Yeah, we can
No, you can do that right now.
All right, well, there, there is a motion to second for a moratorium. And I'm going to go ahead and call the question on that. It's for ninety days. All those in favor of the moratorium, please signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed? All right. Those said thumbs up. So, it was unanimous, so we'll, we'll have that. Counselor Thomas, your motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the work session scheduled for January the thirty-first be extended to be a regular business meeting.
All right, there's a motion and a second and a discussion to the regular business meeting. All right, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right.
All right.
And it will be a regular business meeting and I think we could we need to make sure people understand when they come for first reading that it is only to comment on the moratorium, not on the actual ordinance itself. And my hope is that we can still continue with a good portion of the the tour. And Counselor Thomas.
And Mr. Mayor, I recognize a couple of people in the audience who are here for the reports that Mr. Hughley has on his agenda. And I would ask that someone on Mr. Hughley's staff that's sitting back there, you know, check with these folks and see if they want to come back next week and make their presentation. I, I just don't want them to sit here for another forty-five minutes or an hour before they get to make their presentation.
Hopeful that we'll see the pace pick up after we got through this one a little bit, so.
All right, we'll bring an ordinance for the moratorium first reading next week. Now, point of clarification on this particular ordinance, the short-term rental amendments, do we want to bring that back or hold it in abeyance? Table it?
Well, if we've got, I would think we I would think we can just continue it and that way when the staff gets the information necessary, we can pick it up. And that, if that's next week, that's great. If it's February fourteenth, that's, that's when we'll do it too. Just continue it.
Is that okay with planning? We'll just continue the first reading? All right. We'll do that.
Okay. Ma'am, the council is putting a moratorium in place, but that has the weight of law. So, it takes an ordinance and by law, the ordinance has to have one public hearing and then we'll vote on it on the next meeting. So, it won't be able to be approved until the fourteenth, which is our next meeting. Uh, no, no ma'am, not on, not on the, the moratorium. Ma'am, I tell you what, if you, come on up to the mic if you have a question about the timing of the moratorium. We want to make sure everybody understands what we're talking about.
So, Fran and I, we thought that we could put a freeze and council would agree to freeze it and freeze it now. So, like Isaiah said, by next week, we won't have fifteen more open up.
I understand your concern, but our, our city attorney was pretty clear in stating that a resolution will not be as defensible in, if it's challenged, as, as the ordinance. So, we'll move as quickly as we can, but it's going to take us the next two meetings.
So, it can't be put as a text, text ordinance on this one?
No.
No ma'am. Thank you.
A moratorium has to be in an ordinance to have the force of law. We've always done that no matter what the use they were regulating. It's just got to have the force of law.
Okay, so I apologize because I didn't, we didn't understand.
That's all right. Thank you. Hey. I think that, okay, we got somebody else?
Sorry, it's still on short-term.
Sure.
Not through, not through yet. I'm glad that we're, basically, I'm pleased to see that everyone's in agreement that we need to do something. It's more of a question on the percentage.
Did you state your name?
Oh, sorry, my name is Chance Chancellor, seven thirty-two Broadway, Colms, Georgia, three one nine oh one. I personally don't have any reservations on a phone number of the property, on the property door. This is a commercial establishment. It's just taking advantage of our zoning laws. All businesses have their operating hours, their phone number on their door and on the internet as well. I don't see why these, most of these places are businesses anyway. They should have to do the same. To Councilwoman Kogle's point about going up on numbers or down on numbers, it, I believe is much easier to go down in the future. Once you're at a number up high, you can never take that number down. It's, it's taken us two years to get to this point here today. I don't want to see the perfect be the enemy of the good, but I do think when talking to Savannah, talking to Nashville, they're all pulling their numbers down and it's taking them a long, long time to do it. So, why are we going to go start up here, something that we know is a problem from other comparable cities, or cities that we want to be and repeat the mistakes that they made fifteen years ago when we can get it right today? Let's see. And to, I mean, the difference between a percentage and a number, I, I don't care if it's five percent or a number as long as that number represents five percent of, of the historic district. Keep in mind, that's what PAC voted on, knowing the number that five percent would recommend, would be. That's what HDPS voted on, knowing the number that five percent would be. That's what the people here in the audience are here to support, knowing the number that five percent would be. And so, as we sit there and if we translate five percent over into a fixed number, let's make sure it re- it represents that five percent because that's what we all want. I do know there was some hesitation on making it a fixed number because parcels can be later subdivided or there's issues with that. So, there was some method to the madness of making it a percentage that also for equal protection scales across neighborhoods a lot better. But we need the, the fidelity of five percent. We don't need ten percent. Ten percent in our neighborhood with how many commercial places already exist will cause too much clumping as people clump in our area. So, I don't want to turn to my left and my right and across the street and they're all Airbnbs and, but they're under five, five percent. So, I mean, they're, they're, we're under ten percent. Five percent, I think, will fix that problem. When the city appraiser spoke at PAC on Airbnbs, she spoke to how it reduces cities revenue. Airbnbs are poison to city revenue because people leave the neighborhoods. They reduce the value of the property. The Airbnbs are not paying for the furniture that they should be taxed on in this, inside their property and their facilities. They're not paying those taxes. So, they're, they're not keeping up their end of the bargain for what we're trying to sit here and grant them permission in our city to operate. And so, I think that's really all I have to say. Again, this, just to say, five percent doesn't count owner occupied. You've heard that and that's why I'm going to stress. This is not going after mom and pop operators. This is going after LLCs, out-of-town LLCs that come in where our real estate's cheap. They buy up a bunch of our houses where suddenly our citizens can't afford to live there, can't afford to raise children there. And then they ship all of that money that should stay in our city with people that work in our city, that pay taxes in our city, that eat in our city. And they just ship it out of state or out of the city. The money doesn't stay here when it's an Airbnb. So, please look at that five percent and or, and/or that hard number that that five percent represents and take, keep that in mind as you're voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chan. Counselor Kogle.
Kim, is it possible if we amend the ordinance right now to reflect thirty-five Airbnbs in the downtown historic district and then twenty? Because there's twenty legally operating, right, in, in St. Elmo? And then vote on it next week? At least then it accelerates the stopping by at, at least three weeks. And then come back and amend the amendment to the ordinance. Does that make sense? So, if we make an amendment right now to, to have the Airbnbs at thirty-five and twenty, as noted in the PowerPoint, and then vote on it next week? And then, I mean, I'm impressed if illegally, illegally operating Airbnb will pull that together and be inspected within a week. And then we pass it, we, as a second reading next week, it stops the bleeding until we can figure out the rest.
Yeah, you can do that. Now's the time to amend the number while you've got it on first reading. Did you say thirty-five for downtown?
Right, so thirty, thirty-five, I think in the PowerPoint, I think it said thirty-five, right? Thirty-five legally operating Airbnbs right now in the downtown district and there's fifteen illegally. So, I'm talking about just the legal Airbnbs that are going on right now and the twenty that are in St. Elmo. If we amend the ordinance right now to, and then push it to second reading and vote on it next week, if we follow what Ryan said on their inspection process, then that would be a very fast inspection process for fifteen Airbnbs, which I don't know if fifteen Airbnbs can be approved within a week. I, I, no offense, Ryan. And then that way we can vote on it next week. We can stop the bleeding until we can figure out the rest of the ordinance and then we can come back and talk about the stickers on the doors and the phone numbers and the actual numbers. But then at least it just curbs everything. No one can, it's basically taking the moratorium and bumping it up.
Yeah, you can do that. If, as long as you're doing that, I would suggest that you add in the additional amendment of no more than two adults per bedroom, just so that's in here. And you can vote on that next week.
Sure, I'm, I'll make that motion.
Is it two adults per bedroom in there?
Not yet.
Right.
What is the motion?
What is the motion? Right, so it's the, so it's the number of legally operating Airbnbs within each district or within each historic district, so thirty-five and twenty, and leaving it at that cap for right now. And then
The other numbers stay the same, the other districts, right?
What other district?
High uptown, all these other districts, those numbers stay the same.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, all, so all those, yeah. So, all those other, so all those other ones stay the same. And then limit to, to adults per bathroom, I mean bathroom, bedroom. This is like, hopefully they're not in the bathroom together.
Either one.
All right, there's
What, did you want to comment on the occupancy?
The occupancy, it's usually, the standard is usually two per bedroom plus one.
Okay.
So that, that, so then, then you can have, you know, an extra for chi- children.
Okay.
Two per bedroom plus one.
If you want to make it three occupants per bedroom, this or two, two adults plus one child.
So, yeah, so two and one.
Got it.
So, thirty-five, twenty, all the other districts remain the same and then two plus one.
Okay, so that is the motion. Was there a second? All right, there's a second. Counsel, Counselor Thomas is to the motion.
Uh, yes, it's to the
Did I, oh, I'm sorry, there we go.
Uh, it's to the, the number of occupants in the house. Suppose I have three pull-out couches that I have scattered throughout my house. Those don't count? If we, if we say two per bedroom and my sofa, my pull-out sofa is in the den. I, I just, I, I thought that what we were looking to do was to slow this process down so we could look at the entire ordinance and make some changes. And I, I'm, my vote will be no on this motion.
Yeah, I think, I think the intent, the intent of the motion was to fill a gap while, while we're waiting while, while we're waiting for the moratorium to go into effect over the next three weeks. All right? Yeah, Counselor Crabbe?
In that situation, that den becomes a bedroom. It has a bed in it.
All right, so we, is this to the motion, Counselor Davis? Okay. All right?
Counselor Thomas, I think what you're saying is that you, you prefer, you prefer the staff to work on this and to get it together, which is, I'm, I'm on the same page with you. I think adding the, adding the limits on the rooms is, is what's confusing this right now. With Counselor Kogel originally, without the number of occupancy in the rooms, what it was doing is, is moving, really expediting the process of limiting everything a week earlier. That's all we, that's all we're trying to do. I think what Counselor Thomas is saying, she's preferring, you're preferring them to complete the ordinance and then bring us something, don't put that part in, in there if you would consider taking that out, I think. I think that's, and I, I have to agree with Counselor Thomas on that, I don't, I don't know if we wanna try to establish a room count right now.
Well, I would, I would rather see you have something in here, whether it's two plus one, three per bedroom, three per room, just have something so that it's a reasonable ordinance that could be upheld by a court if challenged, and then you can always amend it later.
And that can be done when Ryan brings us back.
All right, I'm gonna, we have, we're gonna call that question. Madam Clerk, make sure I heard it correctly, that is, um, the limits on the, uh, number to be frozen where it is, thirty-three and twenty, plus, thirty-five and twenty, plus the, the others stay the same, and then the occupancy at two per bedroom plus one, is that correct?
Yes, thirty-five Air, Airbnb for the downtown area.
Okay.
Twenty in the St. Elmo area, and the rest will remain the same, and then, uh, three per bedroom.
Okay, all right, then all, yes ma'am, to the motion, no, that's okay, we get it right.
We, um, changed that, that word bedroom to room, 'cause then that would include, like, if they have a pullout couch in the living room or if they have a pullout couch in a den, then tho, those are rooms, they're not bed.
I was just thinking about dining room, I just got tickled thinking dining room table.
I have slept under the dining room table with, you know, put a sheet over it, and it's a tent. But, um, no, but I thought that that might cover, you know, just change it from bedroom to room.
Unless, unless this, unless this motion is amended, uh, we'll call it as it's, as it's, um, as it was stated, so...
I make the motion to amend it to room instead of bedroom.
All right, is there a second to that? All right, there's a second to that. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, those in favor, please raise your right hand.
One, two, three.
All those opposed, same side?
Well, it's a...
What about our two?
Telephone, count first, what are they?
I don't have their vote yet.
So it's an, it's an inconclusive vote, so we'll just fall back to the original.
Cause it's only three in favor anyway.
We'll roll, we'll fall back to the original question. All in favor of approving that, please say aye. Any opposed? We defaulted back, back to the...
Two plus one per bedroom.
Yeah, the, the thirty-five, twenty, same, and then two per bedroom plus one. It stayed as bedroom. All right, all right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All those in favor, raise your right hand, please.
One, two, three, four, five, six, in House and Garrett are in favor, so that's eight.
All right, all those against, just signify by raising your right hand.
One.
Two.
Oh, two.
All right, so that does, that does pass. So, uh...
All right, well, we'll bring it back as amended on second reading, and along with a first reading moratorium for ninety days.
You know, we, we've, and I know we've got, everybody's been waiting, but we've, our folks from the Water Works have been here all evening just to get three Jifa loans, uh, authorized by council. Can we pull that up?
Sure.
Eleven and twelve.
He can.
There is a motion and a second to approve items ten, eleven, and twelve, Resolutions authorizing the Water Works to accept varying, uh, loan amounts from Jifa. Mr. City, Mr. City Attorney, if you would just kinda walk us through what that's for. Mr. Davis, you've been here waiting, would you like to come up and let us know what the loans are for? It's up to you.
It's, uh, eight point eight million...
Carl?
For the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund, eight point eight million, eleven point two million, and seven point five million.
It's to upgrade, uh, a couple of Jifa loans we have, because material and construction costs have gone up so much, and also we, one of our, um, permit requirements on our CSO project is requiring additional infrastructure, so that's the essence of why we need these loans increased. So appreciate you bumping us up a little bit here.
Yeah, I'm sorry it took a while, thank y'all for your patience. Sandra, we did call that, did we, not? Okay, guys, thank you, appreciate you waiting around, but they've all been approved.
Well...
Oh, we didn't?
They, they need to vote.
All right, that's what I was asking, I thought we said, yeah. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Yeah, yeah, it was motion and a second. You have a question to the motion, go, go.
I do.
All right, ask.
I'm, I'm kinda confused why you're coming in front of this body for us to vote on this, because we've always under, I've, I've always understood that you guys are a separate entity just like, um, the gas company or the, the power company, and so why are we getting involved in this?
We're an executive branch of city government, we're, we are different than the gas company and the power company. Our board has authority to set what our sewer rates, but when it comes to debt, because the city is, um, involved in that, we do need city council approval when we enter into debt.
Okay, thank you for explaining that to me and the citizens.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, that is correct, this is a co-signer of a loan, the city and the Water Works, so...
All right, well, all those in favor, now signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Thank you. Those three items have passed.
All that talk about bedrooms made me sleepy, I'll see you.
All right, Mayor. Can we get back to the demolition ordinance on first reading now?
Oh, Counselor Davis?
Mayor, can we consider, uh, can we consider going to the public agenda and then cut? This is gonna, demolition sometimes take a while, if we... And we can go to the public agenda and solve that and come back?
Well, we've got the tax commissioner here on a couple of items. One's a demolition and one's a resolution, so...
So we probably oughta continue with that first, and then we'll bring them, I guess.
Mr. Pruitt, you wanna queue it up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Attorney, um, I have seven properties, uh, for consideration tonight. They're all listed here, the total cost is a hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and ten cents.
All right, we'll call these up individually, if you're present as an owner, please raise your hand or speak up. First item is twenty-nine forty-seven Chitago Road, Linda Brantley Hood and Virginia Hood. Anybody present? Don't see any hands. Nine thirty-one Fifth Avenue, Lul LLC owner. Okay, next one, uh, six fifteen... She's on number three, we've got her. Are you on Fifth Avenue? Well, come on up, please, uh, everybody knows you, but give your name and address.
Okay, good evening, Lula Huff, uh, I'm representing, um, as an attorney in fact for nine thirty-one Fifth Avenue. And, um, I've just got a couple of things I'd like to pass out, cause I'll also follow with six fifteen Eighth Street that I'm the trustee for.
Yeah, and we can combine these, the next one is six fifteen Eighth Street, uh, Ms. Huff owner, so you can talk about both of them together.
Okay, thank you very much. The one at nine thirty-one Fifth Avenue, um, the following is a formal request to impose a delay of sixty days on demolition of the property noted. Uh, I'm currently working with Historic Columbus Foundation to find an entity that will restore the monumental property. It's the home of Elizabeth Canty, for which Elizabeth Canty Homes namesake belongs to. I've been in contact with Philip Thayer of Thayer Construction Company to try to stabilize the porch, but the cost estimate to do this is prohibitive for the owner, and therefore an alternate preservation is being sought through the Historic Columbus Foundation. Elizabeth Barker, the director, is assisting in this effort. While this has been an arduous fat process, arduous process, I pray that a solution will be had, thus protecting an integral piece of the city's history. Do you want me to go to the next one, or...
Yeah, request for sixty days on Fifth Avenue, and you can go ahead and talk about Eighth Street.
All right, uh, the subject on six fifteen Eighth Street demolition, I appeared on June tenth, twenty nineteen, before the Board of Historic and Architectural Revenue, uh, BHR, and Columbus Consolidated Government Inspections and Code Department, and the case is referenced there, and presented the attached letter that you have, and I have pictures that I took with me at the time. And based on the hearing that I, I attended, I was told the citation was being withdrawn, and, and understood it to mean there was no violation being held against the property. I have not received a citation since twenty nineteen, and did not realize the property was in danger of demolition until December of twenty twenty-two. I respectfully request that six fifteen Eighth Street be removed from the demolition list.
Okay, any questions of council? Now, I will say on the first one, um, I wonder, I wonder if it's possible to work administratively with Ryan, since it was sixty days and it's not likely that it'll be through the second reading and then be scheduled for demolition in sixty days. In that way, if you can work something out with Ms., uh, with, um, what's her name, from, hey, Historic Columbus? Yeah, Ms. Barker, uh, then you can go ahead and get it done. If not, then it wouldn't delay the process moving forward with the demolition. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, I guess I, I would like to hear from, um, Mr. Pruitt on both these properties.
Yes, for nine thirty-one Fifth Avenue, um, we have actually had a case on that property, um, since twenty seventeen, and of course that predates my time in the department. The, the conversation was that the, the owners at that time, uh, were actually interested in demolishing the house in twenty seventeen. They took a petition to BHR and that petition was denied, and at that time, um, inspections and codes kinda dropped the issue. And then in twenty twenty, the ownership was changed to the current, um, LLC, um, and again with the renewed focus on dilapidated properties and, and all that, we restarted the process, mailed out the letters, uh, went through the whole, the whole process. I spoke with, um, Ms. Huff in April of, of twenty twenty-one about the plans for the property, and they, at that time, they were looking at, uh, you know, fixing it up and repairing it. And we haven't noticed any, any work at that location since those conversations almost two years ago. And then six fifteen Eighth Street, um, we did have a property maintenance case on that, uh, piece of property, you know, property maintenance cases are what we call dilapidated properties that haven't, uh, reached demolition worthy. So we went through that, we did go to BHR, um, it was discussed at that time. However, the property has continued to deteriorate, the roof has completely collapsed inside. Um, it's similar to six hundred Eighth Street, that was right across the street that we tore down earlier, or last year. It's just a brick shell building at this point. I spoke with Ms. Huff in March of twenty twenty-one, um, informed her at that time that again with the renewed focus on dilapidated properties, that we needed to get, to work on it, we needed to replace the roof. Um, and again, no work has happened in almost two years.
Yes, ma'am.
In the property on Fifth Avenue, it did change hands and the intent was to go in and try to save it. We were hit with COVID, could not get any contractors to respond to phone calls that were being made at that particular time. We thought it was possible to do that. When we finally got conversations going about it, the costs have become so astronomical that we could not do it. And so we have reached out, as I said, and had conversations with, um, Elizabeth Barker at Historic, at, um, Historic Columbus Foundation to try to save the building because of its historical significance. If she felt that there was a good possibility that there might be a match out there, that someone would be interested in taking it and rehabilitating it and keeping it because of its historical value. If that is not the case, and she cannot assist in that manner, then of course we would be, you know, will proceed with the demolition. On the other piece of property, that piece of property is not like the piece of property that was demolished by the city. It sits on private property, it's completely enclosed, it's barred up, and I can show you pictures of that in more detail. Yes, it has a frame around it. We intentionally were allowing the roof to collapse inside. It's not collapsing outside the building, it's collapsing inside the building just to save us on costs in tearing it down and replacing it. So once that happened, and it's, it's there now, we would have it removed and a roof placed on it, but it's entirely enclosed by a fence around it so that it's not a nuisance to the public of any sort. Eh, every door, every, uh, all the doors around it are secured, and there's a fence around it. So, um, and again, I did not understand anything any further than when I left at that time, and I have a note that I attached to it, that the citation was pulled. So therefore I felt that we were no longer liable or breaking the law, or there was no violation being incurred, and was not aware of anything until December of twenty twenty-two.
All right, uh, Counselor Crabbe?
It's been, um, this body's habit, or, um, that when it comes to this point on the list, that, um, we don't remove them from the list, but we recommend that you work with Ryan. And if, if he sees that there's work being done to the property, then he'll work with you and just wa, or coordinate that with him. So, um, that's how we've advised others in this situation.
Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Huff, um, thank you for letting us know the, the historic significance of this home. I did not know that, did not know this was Elizabeth Canty's home. And you said you are working with the Historic Columbus Foundation to try to get some funding to do this. If we were to give you a, uh, sixty day delay on this, do you, uh, think that your conversations with Historic Columbus and tell them I've got a sixty day... I've got a sixty-day delay, and I've got to know something, and I've got to get back to them, or they're gonna put it back on a demolition list? Would that, would that help? Would that, you know, I don't want us to tear this place down if there's a way we can save it because of its historic value to our community, to our, our city. So what do you, what do you think? What do you think the chances are of Historic Columbus coming up with something that we can work with?
They have other resources, much more so than we would have. And my conversation with the director, Elizabeth Barker, was very favorable. And she had no problem with me mentioning her name and bringing it to the attention to this body that she would like to try to save it. So that made me feel very good. If those listening to this don't understand, you know, the housing authorities, Canty Homes are named in her honor.
Yes.
And she was an educator here. So the intent on our part, I'm very much a historian in nature, would like to save it. So I'd like to be given an opportunity to work with her and give her the opportunity. She knows much more about the resources and the avenues that are available out there to save structures like this.
I'm, I'm very aware of and cognizant of the Elizabeth Canty Homes. But I did not know that this particular house was Elizabeth Canty's house. That's part of that. And I, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Mr. Pruitt, if we were to give this a sixty-day delay, what are your, what are your thoughts? What are your? Tell us how, what you think.
You know, it is counsel's decision whether or not to, to delay it. You know, certainly we'll, we'll work with Ms. Huff and, you know, check in and, you know, see how the progress is going, see, you know, what kind of agreements, contracts with contractors and those types of things to, you know, ensure that there's a, that there is some steady progress. You know, that's what, anytime anybody appears and, you know, normally, we, we do put that property at the bottom of the list to give them as much time as possible to, to comply because it is better for everybody if we do reach some resolution. So, you know, we can work it however counsel wants us to.
All right.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm going to move that we give a, we grant the request for a sixty-day delay.
All right, there's a motion, Counselor Thomas.
On nine thirty-one.
Second from Counselor Kogle. Any discussion? Counselor Davis to the motion?
I, I don't, I don't mind the timeframe, working within the timeframe. But in an effort to remain fair, just, and equal, I've been very vocal with many people that have stood at the podium about this very, this very nature of what we're dealing with here. And I would have to say that we, we have a lot, we kind of give the timeframe, and we usually give the city manager the directive to manage these based on trying to, what we're trying to accomplish. And he's been fair. He's been, I think he's been just across the board with everybody that's come through. And if there is a, a true effort to try to make this work, and it can work, then he'll do everything within his power to do it. I think we ought to do it the same way that we've done all the other requests that we've granted. And I think usually is with the, the city manager taking a look at it and managing, managing it as we go.
All right. There is a motion in the second. The second was Counselor Kogle. So we'll call that question. All in favor of the sixty-day extension, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, all right. So all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? So, okay. So it, it gets. Yeah, I think. Yep, okay. Well, that passes. So there'll be sixty on, on that property. And I don't, there's, hasn't been a motion on the other one. It's not a public hearing, I don't, on, I guess it is. I apologize. I thought it was just for the owners to come talk to.
He needs, he needs to come.
You need to come over here and give your name.
Unless you're trying to put something.
Chance Chancellor, seven thirty-two Broadway. Again, I've tried to figure out how to work this thing over there. Can you pull that up?
What are you trying to show? No, no. What are you trying to show?
I'll also need the Mooney Code pulled up if you can. So this is a picture of the property, the Porter Auditorium, that was demolished last year in the Liberty District. I spoke here trying to preserve it. I was unsuccessful. Counselor voted, voted to demo it. So I'm here today basically for the same purpose, that demolishing historic properties in designated historic districts is not an appropriate use of demolition. It's not. We're sitting here. Both these properties are located in what's left of the historic Liberty District. Every property that is demolished weakens not just the Liberty District, but it weakens all of our historic districts. It sets the precedent that you can go in, and any property can be demolished suddenly. You've got clean dirt that you can then take out of H I S T, free of protections, and do whatever you want with it. And that's not appropriate. So the property should not be demolished. It needs to be preserved and protected. And we need to design a system that encourages landowners and assists them in bringing into compliance. Right now, our incentive is a hundred percent to let these properties fall into disrepair because it doesn't matter. The city will come along. The city will demolish it at taxpayer expense. The city will finance the destruction of our own city's history, our history, and our taxpayers. We get the bill to pay for it. And I know it goes on a lien, and that eventually the property has to be cleared of the lien. But these people, the Porter House, that was out of town LLC. We couldn't touch them. They, they sat there, and they just ate the cost. They just ate the cost of it going. They didn't have to come out of pocket. They didn't have to do construction load. It's, the system right now is designed to let these properties fail into disrepair. Luckily, we have an owner here that wants to save this property. Let's give them the chance. Let's take it off the demolition list. Let's see. So if you pull up Mooney Code nine point three dot sixteen, the, it details the maintenance of historic property. The city currently has the power to monitor city properties, and then through Mooney Code twelve point five point four, can enforce fines on non-compliant properties. Why is the city, this was a hundred seventy, these two properties represent, what, seventy thousand dollars? Why are we paying that out of the city budget? Why do we have a cash outlay when our schools are failing? When our, we can't pay our police, when instead, we can generate revenue off of these properties to encourage by fining them up to a thousand dollars per day to generate revenue for our city to bring and encourage everyone to bring these into compliance? I'm not encouraging us to go and start fining Ms. Huff a thousand dollars a day. I'm saying that we have that power for the people that do not want to bring this property into compliance where we don't have to sit here and eat the cost of a lien for five, ten, twenty years until it's sold. The way that we're handling demolishing historic properties does not make sense because right now, a homeowner will just, a, a property owner will just let it fall. There's no incentive to actually preserve it. So finally, we must strengthen B H A R and the review process for demolishing historic properties. We need to review the process in which they're added to the demolition list so that we're not sitting here and every time historic property comes up, you know, we're not sitting here having to defend it at the last second. Today, you were scheduled to vote to honor Ma Rainey. Last year, you voted to demolish the Porter Auditorium, which she performed, plain and simple. So let's save what remains of her neighborhood. It's now as important as ever to save the few buildings we have left. Thank you.
Thank you. And the one, the one was extended sixty days. The other one, there's been no action on. There's no.
Let's continue with the list. Ms. Huff, if you could stand by a few more minutes, we've got a resolution involving your office. Punch up the next one there, Mr. Pruitt.
Well, and if I could just make sure we are clear, Ryan Pruitt is clear. What happens in sixty days now? I, I just, he needs to know what you've directed him to do.
I guess he goes back on the list. It's been pulled off the list. Counselor Davis?
No, I just, Mr. City Manager, that's a good question. I mean, I would hope that you facilitate it, that we can get it to a point that it can be preserved. But that's gonna take capital. I mean, somebody's gonna have to come in, either be a partner, or the property owner's gonna have to figure out how to make it happen. But, I mean, that's what I would look to, and I'm, I'm sure that if it, if, at the end of the day, it's not gonna work, then you're, somebody's gonna come back and inform us. But if it's gonna work and it's moving along, I think just like you've managed all the other requests for demolition in the past, that'd be the appropriate manner to, to proceed. That's why I said that earlier. So in sixty days, if there's no action, we should bring it back to you? I, I think so. Oh, first read or?
If it stays on the list, you can just bring it back and give a report that there's been no action.
Can I ask for or provide some additional information about the sixty days? The sixty days was to give Elizabeth Barker time enough to locate someone that would be interested in rehabilitating it. I'm sure that everything couldn't be done in that, in that amount of time. But we would communicate with Ryan to let him know that, yes, there is an interested person. Here is the individual statement saying that they are interested in it. This is the plan of action for it. This is the timeline to try to make things happen. That was the intent behind the sixty days. There is no way that that building could be rehabilitated in sixty days. First, we have to find the person, and that's what she was looking for, was to identify what resource it would be that would take it on. And it could possibly be that the building is relocated elsewhere. That's a start. But the initial intent is to say there is action being taken to preserve the structure.
Well, I.
And, and if nothing.
I would think that if, in sixty days, then a plan, I think what we're saying, then the plan needs to be put together and it's be somewhat concrete as a direction you're going. I mean, it's not sixty days to sit and just try to figure it out. My little, I don't understand what you're saying because I, and part of me says, you just told me that, that you, you want the historic district to do it all. I don't know if you still have a part in it or not. Is your intent to give it to the historic district?
Absolutely. If, if there is someone out there, they do it all the time. They will, they will donate buildings to the historical foundation, and.
Well, they do have a foundation. If that's the point, I'm sure they'll come back with a plan to present to the city manager if that's, they've done this before.
Right, and, and that's basically what I'm saying. If they can't identify someone that's interested in doing this, then we proceed with the demolition. But if within sixty days, they can identify an entity that's interested in taking on this project to preserve it, absolutely, my whole, our whole intent is to preserve the, the structure because of its historical significance. Okay, so within sixty days, if we don't have a plan that identifies what you want, that says to Pruitt, yes, we are making an effort to preserve it. It is not standing still doing nothing. A contact has been made. An agreement has been signed. The company is turning over its ownership to this body. To me, that's taking action to preserve it, as you're saying.
Right, that's, that would be consistent with how we've dealt with. Anybody that's been in your position that's come up to the podium in the past. You know, as long as I've been on council, that's pretty much how we've handled. We've given everybody the opportunity. And it does, I mean, it really takes, it, it, it takes somebody the willingness, and it takes capital. It, it, there's a lot that goes into preserving these properties.
I, I understand that, and that's why we're trying to identify sixty days to identify the person that would take this on.
I would think sixty days is more than enough for the historic district or historic society to make a determination on it. I think that's, that provides clarity.
Counselor Kogle?
I, I agree with Chandler and yourself. I think we do a lot of history, historical buildings backwards. We're just quickly to tear them, we're too, a little too quick to tear them down. So I, I'll make the, I'll make the motion to extend it for thirty, for sixty days. Just kidding. I was not here, sorry. Sorry. Nope, not a good seed name. Left me out to dry. Well, then I'll second it. Oh, okay. Well, then never mind.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, if I may, you know, I, I just want to be clear. You know, with, with, with staff, when we say that we're too quick, and I know that we said it, it was said about the, the Porter Bill, the building at six and eighth and, and this. But when you go, how long have you been dealing with this building, and then how long did you deal with the building at six and eighth?
So the Fifth Avenue, we've had a case in our system since twenty seventeen, since February of twenty seventeen. The six hundred Eighth Street property that we tore down, that dated back to, I believe, twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen. So I, I don't know how, you know, what's too quick. But, you know, typically, it takes years to get to the point that Ryan is standing before the city council. So I just want to be clear that this wasn't something that we worked on for six months. It's something that. On this one, actually, seventeen, I think it actually had been worked on since two thousand fifteen. And then it may have changed hands or something, and then with a new owner, it started in two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, with the first, in our current system, the first date we have where the first certified mail was issued was in March of twenty seventeen for that property.
Well, and I think that's just indicates counsel's desire, if at all possible, to try to save that historical property because they had the same kind of conversation with the other one, if you remember.
And that one was two thousand thirteen.
I know it. And it's, and it's, it's just, it's a tough balance between some of the other things that we have to, that counsel has to consider in those sites. All right?
Let's move on down the list. Mr. Pruitt, nine two six Lawyer's Lane. This is nine two six Lawyer's Lane LLC. Is anybody present? All right, don't see any hands. Forty-one ten Second Avenue, Argiello, Victor Manuel Rodriguez, owner. Anybody present?
Was this the one that the tree fell?
Yes, it was. And, and just to comment, they have demolished about ninety-five percent of it or more. There may be a chance they may get it completed by next week.
Have they reached out to you? Because my next-door neighbor knows this man, and he reached out to me, and I told him to reach out to you about this property.
I do not believe we have, I haven't heard personally from him. I do know he got, he pulled demolition permits, so he did follow the right process and all that. So I said, if he finishes it, you know, we can amend it and take it off, but it's not quite there yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next, twenty-five oh one Hamilton Road, Joan Danley, owner. Anybody present? Okay, no hands. Twenty-one Matthew Street, George Keeby, junior, owner. Anybody present? Okay. That's the end of the list, and we'll bring it back on second reading, Mayor.
Okay.
Next item, we did have a judge, Chief Judge Smith here earlier, he may have had to leave. The finance director and the HR director have been involved in this item. Would establish a career ladder for official Superior Court reporters. Bump up the transcript supplement per year from ten thousand to fifteen thousand when authorized by a judge. And it sets up a three tier career ladder, and it's recommended by HR and has been, according to Ms. Hollowell, looked at by the pay plan officials. Yep, she's still here. This is first reading. You want to just make a brief comment, Ms. Hollowell? I think it's recommended by the pay officials and your office. And the judge.
Right. Good afternoon, council. This particular ordinance has to do with a twenty fourteen ordinance, a two thousand and fourteen ordinance related to the official court reporters or Superior Court. This was an ordinance that was specific to the UGA pay plan at that time, so now that the new pay plan has been adopted, we amended this particular, that two thousand and fourteen ordinance to comply with the new pay plan. And what it essentially does in that particular ordinance, it did a couple of things. One of them had specifically to do with the court reporters' pay. At that time, the court reporter's pay was a grade twenty-one, and the new classification pay plan, the court reporter's new pay grade starts at one twenty-six. It actually creates a career ladder. It was a career ladder previously in the old pay plan. But it was a very awkward way of having a career ladder. For example, the court reporter, the official court reporter was a pay grade twenty-one, they had to serve for ten years. And after ten years, they could be moved up to a step J that would increase their salaries. While they did continue to receive any colas that other city employees would receive. This particular ordinance, it amends that and makes it easier for those court reporters. It's, it's more of a retention tool for them. It allows three steps, three career ladders. They're starting out at pay grade one twenty-six, and then after five years, as an official court reporter, they move up the next, the ladder to one twenty-seven. And then finally, after ten years of service, they move up to one twenty-eight. So that's the amendment for this particular ordinance. The second part in this particular ordinance has to do with the Judicial Council of Georgia as relates to policies and fees for court reporting services. The per page for criminal cases has increased from three dollars and seventy-eight cents to six dollars per page. Now, this increase happened in twenty fifteen. However, there was no adjustment to the ten thousand dollar that was authorized as a transcript charge. So this has been recommended to be adjusted, recognizing this increase of the criminal cases, the per page rate. This is, so it's being recommended for that to be moved to fifteen thousand annually.
Any questions around the table?
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hollowell. We'll bring this back next week for second reading. And next item is the resolution authorizing Sunday sales for on premises alcohol sellers who are not restaurants for Super Bowl Sunday only.
Motion to approve from Counselor Davis, is a second from Counselor Kogel. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed?
Then our last, last item, Mayor, is a resolution passed around the table. Revised even tonight, and Ms. Huff has involved the Tax Commissioner's Office. This would, this is allowed under state law. It delegates the authority to waive penalties and interest on a tax installment. Council can delegate that authority to the Tax Commissioner. And this would do that for second installments for calendar year twenty twenty-two.
All right, it's a motion from Mayor Pro Tem. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
All right. That passes, Mayor, and I think we covered everything else. I'd be remiss if I didn't say, go you hairy dog, since we haven't met since January the third. That's all we had listed.
Well, I'll second that one, even though I don't get to vote. All right, we'll move to the public agenda, and I can't thank those that are appearing enough for sitting through what's been a fairly long meeting. We'll start with Mr. Jack Rosenhammer regarding the state of hockey in Columbus. Jack, thanks for waiting around, because that's a good story. I know you got to tell.
Yes, sir. So much for fifteen minutes, huh?
Yeah, we'll give you five, but I tell you, if you would, start by giving your name and your address.
Yes, sir. My name is Jack Rosenhammer. I live at nineteen oh two Thirteenth Street in Council of Health District Three. Evening, Mayor Henderson and city council members. Exactly one year ago tomorrow, I came to this chamber with tears in my eyes and fire in my heart, begging all of you to come up with a plan to reopen the Columbus Ice Rink. It has been used as a courthouse for some twelve months up to that point, and with what seemed like no end in sight. As some of you may know, the Columbus Ice Rink reopened to public use in April twenty twenty-two, and quite a bit has changed since then. Not only do we have a flourishing hockey and skating community that grows each and every week, but I also manage to grow the best handlebar mustache this side of the Chattahoochee. While I can enthrall you with tales of epic mustache adventures after this meeting, I'd like to use my short five minutes to inform you all about the great and incredible programs that call the Columbus Ice Rink home. The genesis of my speech today is from a ten minute conversation I had with Mayor Henderson at a business pitch competition at CSU back in November. After regaling him with all the programs and things going on at the rink, he asked me a simple question. Why don't we promote this more? Well, folks, here I am, ready to tell you about all the awesome things that happen at our ice rink, and no, it is not about Airbnb or demolition of buildings. The flagship program and largest user of ice in the ice rink, the Columbus Hockey Association boasts grow, boasts growing youth and adult hockey programs. Currently, a hundred and twenty-nine adults and a hundred and forty youth players hit the ice each week to enjoy the game they love. The CHA's Learn to Play Program, a program that introduces children ages five to twelve to the world's coolest sport, swelled to eighty-seven participants this year, with each of his three semesters numbers growing greater than the previous. The CHA, led by Mr. Orin and Ms. Jessica Hergat, continues to provide opportunities for children and adults to play hockey, both in Columbus and around the country. Our travel teams have and will play this year in Huntsville, Nashville, Atlanta, Charlotte, Raleigh, Jacksonville, and even Indianapolis, Indiana. Our youth program even attracts out of town players and their families with hometowns like La Grange, Auburn, Opelika, Macon, Pensacola, Birmingham, and Biloxi, Mississippi littering our rosters. The Columbus Ice Rink is also home of the Auburn University Men's Hockey Team, that has played in our rink since it first opened in twenty eleven. The Tigers and members of College Hockey South have routinely played against the likes of Alabama, UGA, Tennessee, and other SEC and ACC schools. Their head coach, former Columbus Cottonmouth Ryan Rutz, has grown the Auburn program into a formidable opponent in the southern college hockey landscape. Finally, the Fort Benning Hockey Team practices a few times a week and plays the annual infantry versus armor, armor game coming up this February, and against the combined Columbus Cottonmouth Legends Team, the sports likes of local puck legends, including Scoren Orin Hergat, Brad Prefontaine, Marcel Richard, Carlisle Lewis, Columbus firefighter Levi Lind, and some guy named Jerome Bouchard. Since we last spoke, three new programs now call the ice rink home, and I'm excited to inform you of what they are doing to help make Columbus amazing. First, a new learn to skate program operated by Kelly Dejardin started in the spring this last year. Through her hard work and dedication, over two hundred adults and children have learned the life skill of ice skating, something they can take with them for the rest of their lives, even if they don't wind up playing hockey or figure skating after that. Ms. Dejardin also managed the on ice program for the short-lived Urban Learn to Skate Program. A city initiative aimed at providing low-income children the opportunity to learn how to ice skate at no cost to them or their families. A program we would love to re-energize so more underrepresented children can hit the ice. The second new program to join the Ice Rink family is the Chattahoochee Valley Warriors, an adult hockey program with the mission of educating, training, and encouraging individuals who have incurred physical disabilities in their service to their country to participate in the sport in an environment that is adapted to their ability level. This program provides a safe, inclusive, therapeutic environment for service members to grow as teammates and as people. As of this date, thirty-five veterans and the thirty-five people watching this right now. Veterans and current service members partake in, in this program and practice twice a week, honing their skills in preparation for competitions against neighboring Warrior Programs in Columbia, South Carolina, Jacksonville, Florida, and Atlanta. Finally, the newest program to call the Columbus Ice Rink home is the Auburn University Women's Hockey Team, who took the ice this past August as one of only two SEC hockey, only two SEC women's hockey teams, with the other being those ladies from Athens with the strange-looking dog as a mascot. The Lady Ice Tigers represent all that is good with our youth. Individuals from all different walks of life and experiences coming together to work as a team, take on a new challenge, and pay it forward by setting the foundation for the many girls that will be a part of this program in the future. Our most exciting development regarding women's college hockey in the South is a recent announcement that a new women's collegiate hockey conference will start this fall, with Auburn, UGA, universities of Tampa, South Florida, Miami, and the University of South Carolina, and will hit the ice and take the women's game to the next level in the southern United States. This past Saturday, in conjunction with the CHA, the Auburn and UGA women's teams hosted a try hockey for free event solely for girls. Fifty-one young ladies aged fourteen, four to fourteen, played hockey for the very first time, further showing the wide reach the sport can have in this non-traditional market. Mayor Henderson, I ask you, did you even imagine that would be possible some hundred and fifty-six months ago when you voted to build up Columbus Ice Rink? In closing, I'm proud to say that the state of hockey and ice skating in Columbus is strong, and I hope I brought your attention to all the incredible programs that call the Columbus Ice Rink home. Thank you.
Jack, you just put about a ten minute presentation into five minutes with a second.
From New York City, I talk fast.
Yeah, no, listen, and, 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 you know, I want to thank you for your passion. Even when you came here during COVID, it was clear that you were here for the kids and the folks that wanted to play hockey. So we, we, we thank you for directing that all into the, the ice rink and the skate rink since that time, because it's, I mean, I didn't know that we had the Auburn Women's Club Hockey Team here as, as their home ice, so it's, it's been pretty, pretty good. Counselor Kogel.
Hey, Jack, thanks for waiting for so long. I had the privilege of my daughter being one of the fifty-one that took advantage of the free learn to skate and learn to play hockey. I did trick her into attending, that it was just going to be a learn to skate and not hockey. But we went to the hockey game this weekend, and she has hockey sticks now in her room and signed posters everywhere, and that's all she, that's all she wants to talk about. So you're making a profound impact in our community, and, and just getting kids active and giving them a different option other than playing soccer, baseball, which are all great. But extending the sports to a different, a completely different community of youth is, is very important. So I look forward to working with you over at the Civic Center and as well as the River Dragons as well.
Counselor Huff.
Just want to say thank you for all you do in the community here. Since we made contact in the beginning, you have been really tone, just tone deaf as far as outside noises and staying focused on your mission. So I've run into you here and Civic Center, different places, and you tell me all the time, you know, this is going to get bigger and bigger and bigger. So thank you so much, and stay in focus, and however we can help you, stay in contact.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I do hope we can help you revisit that, that program for the, sort of the underserved kids that come from more impoverished areas of our community that have never been on, on ice skates. So hopefully, we'll be able to get that revived.
That's something that I think we have the unique ability to do here in Columbus, because traditionally, people that played hockey looked like me, and they come from my background, upper-middle-class white boy. Well, that's not how our demographics work here in Columbus. Like, girls can play hockey, boys can figure skate. The highest-paid profession, women's professional hockey player is a black girl from Toronto, Canada. Her brother played for the River Dragons. So, you know, if we can have people like that come down or get that knowledge out, young black girls here from Columbus, Georgia can look up and say, that could be me. I could play professional hockey, get paid to do it. Get paid, she gets paid about, I think, ninety or a hundred thousand dollars a year. She lives off her hockey salary. And right now, it's all concentrated in New England, the Midwest, the Midwest and Minnesota area. Well, why not Columbus?
Jack, thank you. Thanks for sticking around, too.
Thank you.
All right, next is Ms. Lisa Pyburn regarding homelessness, illegal dumping, arson, and infrastructure. Ms. Pyburn, welcome. If you would, start by giving your name and address, and I won't start the timer. And if you don't, for whatever reason, you don't get through with the five minutes, we can, I didn't tell Jack this, you, you can have three minutes after the clerk's agenda. He didn't, yeah.
Thank you for this opportunity to come before you. I appreciate your willingness to serve our community. My name is Lisa Pyburn. I live at twenty-five twenty-three Riverside Drive. I, in twenty thirteen, purchased property in City Village, part of the Mill District now, where I've lived and been a part of the community for over nine years. I've come not only to appreciate the beautiful setting, but to realize the challenges the neighborhood faces. So I start with a map on page two of your handouts that locates the homelessness and the illegal dumping, arson, and some storm drain issues in my neighborhood. First of all, the homelessness. I showed six different places on the map of my neighborhood where, well, the first one has burned, so it's no longer, I wasn't able to photograph that. Homeless Camp Four has two less campers as of last week. I know they're doing a count now on the homeless population. I, once I registered for this meeting, the next week, people came, the police came and gave the, two of the people in the homeless camp at the end of my street a voucher for a home and some information on employment. But it's an ongoing situation in this neighborhood. A concerned citizen found him a home, found them a home, and and thanks to the people, I think he told us it was a united way. Thanks to the people that support that. So homelessness and the avail, availability of affordable housing are a concern that we need to address. Our city is not the only one. The whole world has experienced issues with this. And the recent twenty degree below, I mean, twenty, below twenty degrees temperature that maintained for three days, right, in a row, it's, it's a scary thing to have people that are living unsheltered in my neighborhood. So I called once again, and people offered once again, but they remain, they're, they're not interested in what homes good is offered and other people that I've sent, that I've called to send there to, to help. Moving them off of my block is to be homeless in another location doesn't solve the problem. Punishment isn't a solution. I think that allowing redevelopment of the vacant city property could elevate concern and generate tax revenue. I'm just going to skip a lot of this, because I know I'm not coming off very well.
You're doing fine, you're doing fine.
All right. The second issue, illegal dumping. It makes me a frequent caller to the three-one-one Citizen Service Centers. I took three photos that show problems from earlier this month, and that corresponds with numbers on the map on page two. They have limitations, but and, and they do usually respond. I know that there's a staffing shortage, so. And there was a, there was a man that checked on the homeless people who got a crew together and pulled out, off the city property, huge piles of tires and debris, and they just left it on, on the right away. And I patrol regularly and pick up trash and syringes and condoms. And so it's, it's, it's great property the city owns on my block, and there's a lot of issues since that, there are people around, so the people with the trash dump, they're trash on city property. Uh, the third concern is about, I said five, but there are actually six houses that have, um, been the victim of arson, I don't know if that's not right, let me see, that have been burned down. Did I run out of time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, so, anyway, there aren't a lot, any.
Well, if you have some more to share, uh, you can come back as soon as the clerk's agenda is completed. We've got a few questions. Uh, Counselor Tucker?
Yes, can we give this information, um, city manager, to one of the deputies, um, or even to get it to drill so they can address some of the concerns in reference to the illegal dumping and also the, the homeless camps? And I know, um, Councilor Krabs just said something about stormwater, but, yeah, I see a storm drain.
Yeah, it's, um, I've already been told by the city that they can't do anything, and I can't do anything to correct the issue. But it's flooding my guest house and, um, and I did one, one other thing. The, there is a law that God put on the last ballot that says that property owners that have adjacent city properties can now petition to purchase those properties. I've been trying for ten years to buy some of the properties so I could bring up the community, but, um, it's been told it's not for sale, so. And we have had city planners make great plans for this neighborhood. It's beautiful. Uh, it is, uh, being allowed to degrade and it's, um,
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, Counselor Davis?
No, I was, I was going to say, uh, Ms. Pyburn, just thank you so much for coming down and being patient, and it's obvious you care about your neighborhood, your area, and I appreciate that. So, um, I think that Counselor Tucker was asking us some of the things that you've brought to our attention here, if the city manager can help address some of those things. And I, I think he's got one of these sheets, but you may want to, the city manager, usually you have the staff kind of get together and kind of talk about if there's anything that can be done. I think that's what Ms. Pyburn's come in here and say she's got some concerns she'd like to try to address some of these things if possible, and, you know, she's ran out of time, but she did give us some things. It looks like there's some things on here that, that can be taken care of.
Right, and, and Counselor Tucker, and to you, Counselor Davis, I know you've already given a copy of yours to one of the deputy city managers. But certainly, and, and I gave them my copy to give to Director Drill Short, and, uh, we'll, we'll follow up with each of those things that, that she listed. And, um, you know, I, I will say that, you know, the illegal dumping, we're out looking for and identifying areas where there's illegal dumping. Uh, in fact, um, I, with, I went along with staff today, Director Pruitt and all of his enforcement officers, uh, and with Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin and Pam Hodge and some others, Drill Short and her people, and, and Mayor, we've been on a bus all day. And, um, we've, we've been in various areas of Columbus, and we have issued citations in those various areas. We have been, um, over in the Carver Heights area, uh, down on Terminal Court. We've gone on engineering and Benning Hills area, we've gone through there. We've gone up Second Avenue, we've come down Fourth Avenue, um, Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue over near Fox Elementary. We have issued citations all over those neighborhoods today. We did that, and we identified illegal dumping areas, uh, but, um, we've been out all day, literally before we came to council. So we're out doing exactly the kinds of things that, um, Ms. Pyburn has, uh, has pointed out to us tonight.
Well, and that, and that section really does need some, you know, regular attention. I know, and it's hard for us to get there on a regular basis, but, uh, I mean, that, that's, that does seem to be an area where a lot of the homeless have been, have been camped, and when it gets cold, they light fires, and that's where some of that arson stuff, uh, kicks up, too. But we, we can, we can try to see if we can't get an eye on, on what's going on, particularly with the dumping. Okay, but thank you very much for, oh, wait, wait, we've got Counselor Kogle.
Oh, you got left behind again.
I'm sorry.
This actually falls in District Seven, and, um, I've been, uh, working with Rose Hill, which is right adjacent to you, uh, pretty heavily for the last six to nine months. If you don't mind sending me an email, I will, uh, I will loop you into that initiative, and then, uh, and we can get it straight.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
These are my neighbors.
Yeah, uh, well, I, I, I'm sorry, I, I can't. I would, but, but I'll, I'll get in more trouble if I let y'all speak without being on the agenda. All right, um, and next, we've, and we've got Lori Grief, uh, regarding the ARP grant. And same drill, if you would, start with your name and your address, please, ma'am.
Uh, my name is Lori Grief, uh, six-four-seven-nine Woodbrier. Um, I just wanted to speak to you guys briefly about the ARP grant. Uh, she's passing out a timeline, and this is for my specific business. I know the first ARP grant was to help people that, um, had been in business before COVID. I think the, um, incorporation date was March of twenty nineteen, which proved twelve months before COVID happened, happened in, in March twenty twenty. Uh, and all the other criteria, and then just a business license at the time of the application submission. My business did not qualify for that. We were not incorporated until November of twenty nineteen. Uh, so we were very happy to see the second round of funding come out. If you, um, see on the timeline, we were incorporated November twenty-fifth. I own a franchise, so we, um, signed our franchise agreement and paid for it December seventeenth of two thousand nineteen. Um, and then we, uh, between the franchise agreement and applying for our business license, we had to find a property to lease. Um, and then on March sixth, I applied for our business license, but it ended up being, because we serve alcohol, I had to apply for the alcohol license first. I say all this to say, the second round of funding, you had to have a business license by July one of twenty twenty. I'm one of the businesses that got caught in the catch twenty-two. I was incorporated before then, but I didn't have the business license by July first, twenty twenty, um, because of COVID. As you can see, I did, and I have all the paperwork to docu, or to back it up. We submitted and paid for our si, alcohol sign-in survey on March sixth. Um, unfortunately, my building, uh, is, is between Fifth and Sixth Avenue, um, and it was zoned LMI, uh, and you could not have an alcohol license with that zoning, so we had to submit, um, to get a UPT zoning. I submitted the rezoning application on March fif, sixteenth, um, to be before the PAC Committee on April fifteenth. As we know, March eighteenth, or I think it was March twentieth, actually officially, that everything was shut down. And so at the PAC meeting held on March eighteenth, um, they postponed all meetings, meaning my zoning got pushed back, pushing, uh, all of my licensing back. As you can see, we were able to do the first reading on May twentieth, the second reading on June sixteenth, finally getting approval for rezoning on June thirtieth. At that point, I could proceed with my licensing, um, alcohol and business license. So, um, I was unable to meet the one criteria of having the business license issued by July first of twenty twenty, even though obviously this had been in works for months. And although the chamber recommended our business for the grant, it was ultimately denied because of that date on the business license. So I come to you guys asking for an exception or leeway when it comes to that, if we have documents of everything that had been submitted.
Counselor Davis?
Yes, Mayor, I've, I've had, uh, since, I know Ms. Grief is here tonight, but, I've had a couple others talk to me about this same subject, and, you know, I know there's regulations, requirements, and deadlines and things like that, but, you know, i- i- in, in pondering this, being a business owner myself, um, when do you really become a business owner? When do you really start your business? And, you know, this is a pandemic, something we've never, uh, never, ever, uh, have gone through, and and somebody trying to, trying to get established, especially if, uh, if you're a new business owner, if this is your first time, a young business owner within our community, others that may be in similar situations, it does take time to develop and to get these things going. And, um, it, it just seems to me that there's, 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 there's people out there who didn't receive any help at all. They didn't receive any support at all, but they got caught in a time warp. They're victims of the pandemic, just like everybody else. And I, I think it's somewhat subjective when, when we put deadlines on these matters, and, and then to tell a business owner they don't qualify when, in reality, it takes time to get your business going. And a lot of that is subjective based on what you have to deal with, and I kind of see this in this situation. I've, I've had some others that have come to me. Mayor, you and I had a conversation on this, and you expressed your, the same sentiments, and, I just would hope that we would really look at this a little bit closer, because I, you know, I, I'm not sure what the requirements are as far as from the state, but we've got business owners out there who started this process and got caught up in the middle of this, and it's not their fault. It's just not their fault, but they had to proceed for it. They couldn't stop. They've invested a lot of money. They bought franchises, they've done everything that they needed to do, and it's a step in the process. And then to get delayed depending on someone else's schedule, it just, you know, and to tie it to a deadline is, uh, you know, um, I do question that. And it, and I go back to what I said, when do you really start a business? So I think that what I've been hearing is there are some business owners in our community that got caught in this, and they were unable to get any support at all, none at all. And we opened the, uh, I guess, the opportunity with some grants that came, I, uh, I guess we would call them grants or support money that came in, and we chose to make that decision. And, you know, and I'm, I'm just thinking about these people who have got caught in this somewhat time warp, uh, that are victims of the pandemic. You, I mean, you can make a strong case, and, and we're somehow tying a matter to a deadline. I, I, you know, I wish that we can reevaluate that and look at that a little bit closer. And, and there ought to be some ways to determine if, if, if it's a legitimate request. You know, I, I'll tell you personally, it takes me three years to develop a property, sometimes three years. And my soft cost, before I even get to that point of getting a CO, I mean, my soft cost could be in excess of a half a million dollars, easy. I've got a lot on the line. I can't stop. I can't just stop and go back and say, oh, or pause. And it's the same, even though the numbers and percentages are different, it's the same scenario that others get caught in. And once they start, and once they have to go through the process, some of the times, being a new business owner, just to get a franchise, just to get a franchise takes, takes time. If you get it, they're coming to our community to do business. And, uh, I think there's some people out there that, that have, you know, I just, I call them victims of the pandemic, but they've gotten caught in this time warp here. Mayor, I don't know what the answer is, but I think there may be some business owners that we need to possibly reevaluate. It looks like what was said here tonight and from others I've heard of, the chambers approved them. Now, I don't know what their approval process is on some of these things, but, um, I, I just think that we ought to reevaluate that a little bit. I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure there's going to be extra funds, most likely, um, but, um, I, I, I feel for some of these business owners.
Well, and, and, and let me just say, I, I do as well, uh, Counselor. Here's the thing, um, you know, in the first round of money, you know, we had, you know, first of all, we submit these grant proposals or proposals to receive this money. Like in this instance, we submitted it to the state, and we said, we're going to require them to have business license on July one, and, and we told them all the things that we are going to do, and then they approve what we submitted. And that's what they approved. And so they are going to come down and audit us. And, and when they audit that money, what, what, you know, the chamber can say whatever, but when it gets to our finance director, she is going to make sure that we don't have to pay back federal money. You know, and, and so we submitted, remember on the first round, there was a guy named Jerome Lawson who came, and he was a few days afterwards, and we went round and round with him. And, and many people, you know, submitted, and their business license came after that date, and we said, no. I mean, even, even if it was one day after, because we have, I mean, it's federal money. And so then, when we got a chance to reply for this four-million-dollar state money, you remember, we had to shut down the porters and wait until the state approved our application for that money? We submitted all of our guidelines and criteria, and they accepted it. And so, and, and it's federal money that's passed through the state. And when they come and audit our records, and, and they look for stuff, and if we've not complied with the guidelines that we sent to them and they approved, then that's going to be an exception, and we have to pay that money back. Now, I came to you two meetings ago, and I said to you that it was, it's something that happened prior to Rob Scott's tenure. And there was one piece of paper missing. Twenty-five thousand, that one piece of paper cost us twenty-five thousand dollars. We had to send back to the feds. One piece of paper that's more than a decade, ten years ago, before this guy got, you know, but that's how serious it is. And, and Angelica Alexander is not going to put the city in such a position. And, and that's, you know, I, even when we approve pay plans, and I'm just giving examples. If we say you must have been on payroll July first in order to receive a two percent pay, pay raise, and you came June thirtieth, you don't get that two percent. You know? And so if we were to do this, we'd have to go and do it, open the gate for others, and then when the state comes down to make sure that we have spent the federal money in accordance with our approved application, and they find those, then somebody's got to pay the money back, and that's the problem we have.
I understand. Is there a way to, to, you know, it's been a while back. I don't know the official day that it was declared, uh, we were declared being in a pandemic. But is there any process where you can go and ask for an amendment? Or to go back and reestablish deadlines? I don't know how many people we're talking about. I, I know three personally. And maybe some of the other council members know some people, but. and I'm not sure how many people we're talking about, but I do know there's a lot of people that got left behind. There's a lot of people that benefited that you can make a case that probably shouldn't have. But there's a lot of people that got left behind. Did you receive any kind of support or grant money to, to help out during the pandemic?
No, we received no grant or loan from any institution.
So let me just say, you, you may perhaps need to answer questions as to whether you can amend what you, what we sent. But why don't you share with them what you were trying to share with me?
So in our guidelines, what we indicated for-profit businesses must demonstrate ongoing business operations and existence before July one, two thousand and twenty. Existence shall only be established with the issuance of a business license from the City of Columbus prior to July one, two thousand and twenty.
And that's what they approved?
That's what they approved. That's what's in our guidelines. And so that's what we have been applying across the board to every business that has submitted an application. So to make an exception for one would be having to make an exception for all and we would not be in compliance with the guidelines that the state had approved.
Have, have we exhausted all those funds?
We are really, we, we believe that the businesses that have submitted to date will utilize the three million dollars for the small business program. We had a million dollars for nonprofits and those are the ones that we feel like there are still some funds available. But we're getting really close on the small business applications. Yes, sir.
Is, is there a process at the state to amend a deadline that we can go back?
What, amend, a start? And, and see, here's the thing, what we've got that we have not processed will likely exceed the three millions that we have. And those people are the people who got the business license prior to July one. And so what if, before we can process all of them, we run out of money and we've gone and made an amendment and we don't have money to cover it? That's the dilemma that we have.
Yeah. Well, and, and you know, that's the, yeah, we, we knew going in that, that there were, were gonna be, there always is, there's some that, and, and through no fault of the business owner. But, but in order to receive money from, particularly from the federal government, I mean, there's no wiggle room. I mean, it's, it's one of those deals where you cover everybody that you can. The whole idea was to try to give as many people as possible access to these funds. And I've heard, I've heard, just like Counselor Davis, I've heard that a similar story. That, you know, they, they, that they were operating, they had everything in motion. They just didn't have the license.
And, and it's clear that the alcohol license was approved on August fourth. Business license approved December one, two thousand and twenty. It's not like it was one day after. I mean, it's, it's.
Well, but I understand, I understand the business owner's perspective because they were in motion. They were trying to get it done and some things slowed down because of the pandemic. So I, I understand. I just.
Well, if anything, anything changes, Ms. City Manager, or if there's opportunities, please let us know. So some of these business owners that have kind of got caught into that time warp, you know, maybe they can get some assistance and help, like others.
Miss Grief, thank you, ma'am. All right, Ms. City Manager, we're on your agenda.
Mayor and Council, for the first time in my tenure, I'm reaching my agenda on a five-thirty meeting at eleven oh eight P M. We're getting ready to start the city manager's agenda.
So we could skip yours and go on to the clerks and come back.
History. So power easement request from Georgia Power. They are, we are requesting to enter into a power easement to be in the vicinity of the Follow Me Trail pedestrian bridge crossing.
Motion and second to approve. Any discussion? All right, if you want to queue it, hearing no discussion, counselors, you can enter your votes. I threw him a curve because I've been just doing voice votes all night. And, all right. We can if you want. All right. All right, it's approved. It's unanimous.
I've got Event Court Nerd's Inc. agreement. We'll get sixty thousand dollars annually over the.
All right, this is from the Spring Fling Carnival Group. There's a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? It's approved. We'll do voice votes.
Got a lease.
Mayor Protem?
This mayor on item three. Counselor Davis needs to be recused and I would make a motion that he be allowed to do that.
All right, it's motion and second to recuse Counselor Davis. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, proceed with item three.
I've got a lease agreement, Fox Community Center, U-Gro Inc. Request to enter into this lease, the leased space at Fox Community Center. The city will lease for one dollar per year, being a sum of three dollars prior to the commencement of the initial lease and subsequent renewals, asking your approval.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Right, that's approved.
Next, I've got a ten thousand dollar donation to Sheriff's Office from Flint Energies Foundation.
So there is, there is, yeah, there is a motion and a second to approve items four through eleven, which are all grants. And we'll call the question, but we will walk through them, have the city manager explain what we're voting for. Is there any counselor that wants to pull one of those prior to the time we vote on it? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Okay, so we've got the ten thousand dollar donation from Flint Energies Foundation for the Muskegon County Sheriff's Department. We are requesting that we, Metro be allowed to apply for additional funds. Section fifty-three thirty-nine, formula grant, it's three hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Then we've got the Georgia Trauma Commission, Georgia Trauma Care Network Grant, accepting a grant in an amount of seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents. I've got number seven, we've already approved. Number eight is a Solicitor General Crime Victim Assistance Grant. Nine, the Victims of Crime Act Base Grant. Number ten, Victims of Crime Act Compensation Grant. And then eleven, State Criminal Alien Assistance Grant Application. And those are the purchases that you just approved. And, no, I'm sorry, the items you approved. And so I do have some purchases. I have three purchases. I've got a bus vacuum system for Metro. It's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's a grant matched monies. I've got, and of course, you didn't approve those, I don't believe, so. But bus vacuum system, I'm asking your approval for Metro.
All right, there's a motion to approve the purchases A, B, and C. We will walk through them. Is there any that the council would like pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed?
So A, the bus vacuum system, B, collection services for return checks. And then C, upgrade of juvenile court case management system. It's a hundred thousand dollars for that. Those are the purchases. And then on the updates, I do have the Tax Commissioner who's still here. But I, the River Valley, we've postponed. And then the N C D A, Audrey Nelson. C, we postponed, but D, we wanted to have her to go ahead and make an announcement because these are HUD grants that people can apply for, that you can apply for and it's time sensitive. So I'm going to call on the Tax Commissioner and then on D, Kim Mitchell will come up and talk about the twenty-four HUD Grant Cycle Announcement. Commissioner Huff.
Good evening. I'm responding to two inquiries that council had. One is in relationship to what caused the taxpayers not to receive a second notice for payment of taxes that were due on December one of two thousand and twenty-two. The response is that the Tax Commissioner's Office relies on Tyler, an outside software vendor, to calculate and process property tax bills in a timely fashion. A routine software update created an unforeseen system migration issue during a critical period of the property tax billing and collection season. The migration issue affected thirty-five percent of the property parcels, resulting in delayed posting of tax payments. The delayed posting hindered the ability to produce bills with the correct amount due. Once the migration issue was addressed, there was insufficient time to, one, print the notices and, two, for, to account for the postal service delivery time for taxpayers to receive notices prior to December one due date. Are there any questions?
No, ma'am. Doesn't appear that there are.
Okay, the second inquiry was in reference to the lateness of the financial data being reported to the external auditors in a timely manner. This was basically very simply not having the skilled labor and not having enough employees. Under the limited access to skilled labor, the Tax Commissioner's delay in submitting financial data is directly related to challenges in securing skilled labor. It is difficult to find individuals with the needed skill set for the pay grade offered. In two thousand and sixteen, the office faced the departure of three key personnel, including the accountant, which we are still recovering from. The COVID-nineteen pandemic exacerbated the inherent recruiting challenges. And within the last year, the accounting position in the office has been filled three times within the last year. Most recently, our latest employment was on nine twenty-six with a new accountant, which made it difficult to try to provide the data that was necessary for them earlier. The other problem is we just don't have enough employees. And so what I provided to you is some data that was provided in a two thousand and two study that was done by the Macon-Bibb County Two Thousand and Two Cost Study of Tax Commissioner's Operations in seven comparable root counties in Georgia. I pulled four because they were all consolidated governments. That being Columbus, Macon, Augusta, and Savannah. In two thousand and two, Columbus's population was about a eight hun, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred. We had thirty-two employees. In two thousand and fourteen, we were dropped and cut to thirty employees with a population of about a hundred and ninety. In two thousand and twenty-two, with the last census, the population for Columbus is at two hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and eight. We still have thirty employees. When I look at Macon, in two thousand and two, Macon had a population of ninety-seven thousand. They had forty-three employees to our thirty-two. In two thousand and fourteen, they had a population of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and three, with forty-one employees to our thirty. In Macon, in two thousand and twenty-two, census a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three forty-six, and they have forty-eight employees to our thirty employees. Augusta, which at one time outranked us in population, in two thousand and two, had a hundred and ninety-nine thousand for population. Employees, they had thirty-seven. We had thirty-two. In two thousand and fourteen, the population was two hundred thousand. They had forty-nine. We had thirty. In two thousand and twenty-two, Columbus has a population of two hundred and twelve thousand. We have only thirty employees. Augusta has two hundred and two in population, less than ours. And they have fifty-four employees to our thirty employees. Savannah started out in two thousand and two with a population of almost three hundred thousand at two eighty-nine. They had sixty-three employees. In two thousand and twenty-two, they have sixty-three plus employees with a population of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight fifteen. This comparison shows the magnitude of labor required to run an office of comparable population size. The Tax Commissioner needs additional people with a higher skill set. Additional responsibilities have also come into play since elected to this position with the same number of employees since two thousand and two in this comparison. They include the TAD and Bid Management Collection and Distribution, Processing Titles, TAVIT Collections, operating two systems on the motor vehicle side, which is gratis, and drives both simultaneously. We're having to do the in-house programming for property tax software, utilizing what Tyler has provided. Providing custom reports to agencies via property tax software again. In-person customers are another issue for us. In-person customers are our top priority, closely followed by depositing and dispersing funds to the state, city, and school district. A high level of coordination is required to cause integrity, accuracy, timeliness, and adherence internally. This system is disrupted and delayed when key personnel are pulled to assist in-person customers during high-volume periods, which has created long lines. But we're working towards continuous improvement. And part of that is accounting software is being upgraded. We're working with financial institutions to increase efficiencies. And we're working with our software provider, Tyler Technologies, to provide user-friendly reports and training support. And we're budgeting in fiscal year end two thousand and twenty-four for an analyst with accounting and technology, strong strengths. Are there any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Huff?
Mrs. City Manager, as we approach budget season, looking at the numbers here, Tax Commissioner just says she was applying for one analyst. Is there room in the budget to get her another two or three employees for the budget year to somehow ease the pain compared to what they have in Macon, Augusta?
I would just encourage her to submit it and, you know, we'll take a look. We'll pass it on to the mayor if we think that it needs to be included and then it'll come to, to this body. So I think she would just need to submit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I wanted to go back, Madam Commissioner, I want to go back to the, the first part of it. So what I hear you say is that there was a, I guess, an unforeseen meta-migration issue that was in the software. So it was basically a software matter. So does this mean next year that the taxpayers will get two notices in a timely manner? Is that what you're saying? It's just, just a one-time unforeseen issue? Is that what you're saying?
That's the key. It was unforeseen. There was no way we could have prepared for this. There was no way we could have prepared for this to happen. We did not know it would take place.
Okay.
This occurs a technical issue with our software provider.
That should be taken care of, and then next year, everybody can expect, like we've always done it.
It has been corrected.
Okay.
But I can't predict what's going to happen with technology.
You've been really good all these years. I have to say that. I don't, you know, as long as I've been on council, I don't think you, we've ever had an issue like this.
No, we haven't.
And so that speaks to the, to the credibility of the, of the, of the tax commissioner's office, so. We've done an outstanding job over, over the years, you know. So, yeah, I, you know. I think I'm, I can address my constituents now.
Okay, terrific.
All right.
And if I might just add that I think it's quite honorable that this council passed the resolution that they passed in order to give some relief to those taxpayers that might have fallen into the category of having a penalty or interest charged to them, which by this office, we have to abide by what the law is and the way the law was written. We had to charge it for that. But we will surely implement the ordinance, I think I said, resolution.
Resolution.
Okay, we will definitely take care of that for our citizens. So we appreciate that.
Thank you for your patience. You and your staff, I know they, it's been a long night. Thank you all for waiting so patiently.
And I want to say thank you to these guys and the accountant we just hired just left. But they've done an outstanding job, and one of them didn't get lunch today, and neither one of them has had dinner, so that's part of their commitment.
We're going to put ankle bracelets on them so they can't get away too.
Mayor, so lastly, I've got Kim Mitchell. She will come up and it's fiscal year twenty twenty-four HUD grant cycle announcement.
Yes, hi, good evening. All right, I'm going to be talking this evening about the HUD grant cycle that we are beginning to plan for, and it will take place over fiscal year twenty-four, which we also consider to be federal fiscal year twenty-three. So, of course, this is the kickoff for our CDBG and home funding cycle. Every year, we must do an annual action plan that helps us to establish how we will spend those funds. We have already started the planning process. We had two workshops on Tuesday, January seventeenth, which were Notice of Funding Availability workshops, so interested agencies could come and learn about the funding. This is kind of a condensed version of that, so that you guys will also have an overview of our funding streams and just letting the public know pretty much if anyone, if other agencies are interested, they can learn from this as well.
So we want the Cliff Notes version.
Okay, I'll try to skim through it. Okay, all right. So of course, as you all know, this is based on our consolidated plan, which was a five-year plan, and we have eight goals related to that plan that the action plan has to adhere to. They're related to housing, new housing for affordable, affordable housing, housing rehabilitation, on down to public improvements. We even had COVID nineteen in there because we started our plan back in twenty-one. So for the CDBG program, this is Community Development Block Grant. We are anticipating about one point six million dollars in funding, but this is an estimate. We will know probably in May what our actual amount will be. You guys are probably familiar, we cap at about, at fifteen percent for public services, which should be about a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. And we also do public facilities and infrastructure improvements through this funding stream. Our goals are to benefit low to moderate income households, to aid in the prevention or elimination of slums and blight, and to meet urgent needs as determined by HUD. So HUD has to tell us, yes, that's an urgent need. Of course, our target audience is low and moderate income persons and households. So any activity that we do must serve a majority LMI, Low to Moderate Income, households and families. We can either serve communities that are low to moderate income households or specific groups, whether they be seniors, childcare programs, et cetera. And there are a long list of things that we can do. I won't go into that, but call our office and we'll, happy to share. Okay, then there's, there's our home program. We are anticipating about eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Through this program, we do have a designated organization, a CHODO, that is designated to build affordable housing. We also do, of course, rehabilitation, tenant-based rental assistance, and our down payment assistance program called Sweet Home Columbus. Okay, so the objectives are, as you can imagine, to increase safe, decent, affordable housing, generally speaking. And agencies that apply for the funding must have a twenty-five percent match for the funding that they're awarded. So they have to come with their own state, local, or private funds to match. The goals, as I mentioned before, new construction, land acquisition for affordable housing, and tenant-based rental assistance, and of course, acquisition and rehabilitation. And through the home program, we generally serve families that are eighty percent area median income. But if you are looking for tenant-based rental assistance, it maxes out at sixty percent AMI. So for an example, for most of our programs, if you're a family of four, you couldn't earn more than fifty-four thousand, around fifty-four thousand. But if you needed tenant-based rental assistance, a family of four could only, could only earn around forty-one thousand. So for those agencies looking to apply, there is a list of criteria. You do have to be somewhat established and be able to demonstrate your capacity to manage these funds. We are receiving federal funding, as the city manager talked about just a minute ago. And so our agencies are as responsible as we are at being capable of managing those funds well. So again, any agency that you guys would like to recommend or that's interested is welcome to reach out to us. We will be accepting applications for this, these funding streams until Sunday, February nineteenth at eleven fifty-nine. You can go on neighborly dot com to complete the application. And if you have questions, you can contact me, Kimberly Mitchell, at mitchell dot Kimberly, sorry, mitchell dot Kimberly at columbus georgia dot org. Happy to answer any general questions you guys have.
So just quickly, so if you receive their application at twelve midnight on February nineteenth, are you going, pardon? On the twen, it would be the twentieth. Are you going to accept that application?
No, we do have a cutoff. We want to be fair to everyone, so the deadline is the same for everyone.
Okay. And so if, if one of the agencies you award money, if forms are missing, and, and they audit them and those forms are missing, somebody's got to pay that money back.
That's right.
And, and who's responsible for paying it back?
We are as the grantee. We are responsible for the actions of our sub-grantees.
And that's why we, we've got to be careful about who we select, and, and they got to meet all the Godland's criteria. And we've got to make sure that they have all of the paperwork, because that one agency that didn't have that paperwork ten years ago, whenever, cost us twenty-five thousand dollars.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, so the goal number two, where you say housing rehab, those applications are only for agencies, not for an individual who's trying to get a housing rehab, but a actual, say if the Urban League wanted to put some matching dollars up to do a project, it would be just for the Urban League, not for an individual homeowner.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I said that. And I also want to say congratulations. I know we're not going to talk about that in reference to the award that you all received, and hopefully we'll have it at the next meeting.
Yes, I believe so.
That's all the questions, Kim. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my agenda.
All right, Counselor Huff?
Mr. City Manager, I'll get you more details tomorrow. I have a person that lives off of Baker, Baker Circle. And the issue is, there's a tree that has caused some trouble over the years, and the pipes and things, anyway, every time it rains, the water runs back under her house, so it's into the crawl space area. And from time to time, it comes into the house. So I'll get you the details and I'll see what we can do. Okay, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. For the clerk's agenda, item one is a resolution excusing Counselor Barnes from today's meeting.
Motion second to approve. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right.
Item two is a travel authorization.
All right, it's a motion second to approve the travel authorization for Counsel Kogle, for the newly elected officials' training.
Yes.
All in favor say aye. Are there any opposed?
Item three are minutes of ears boards.
All right, it's a motion and second to receive the minutes. Any, that any council would like pulled? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That passes. They are received.
Next, we have board appointments. First, we have the mayor's appointment, the Public Safety Advisory Commission. Mayor Henderson is nominating Mr. Chuck McClure.
Motion second to confirm Mr. McClure. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation, the Land Bank Authority. Ms. Lauren Chambers was nominated to succeed Mr. Tyler Pritchard.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Chambers. All in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Ms. Chambers is confirmed.
Next, we have council district seat appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. The Community Development Advisory Council. He may be confirmed.
Motion and second to confirm Mr. Parton. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? He's confirmed.
Next, we have the Recreation Advisory Board. Counsel Barnes is nominating Ms. Lane Ogletree Battle to succeed Mr. Lonnie Boyd.
All right, motion second to confirm Ms. Ogletree Battle. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. The Building Authority of Columbus, the seat of Vincent Allen. This seat is open for nominations. Next, we have the Columbus Aquatics Commission. We have the seats of David Helmick, Bruce Samuels, and we have one vacant seat that Counsel Kogle is nominating Ms. Jensen Melton for this vacant seat, and we will bring this back at the next meeting. For the Personnel Review Board, we have the seat of Dr. Shanita Pettaway. This seat is open for nominations. For the Tree Board, we have Chris Henson, Troy Keller, Frank Tommy. These seats are open for nominations. Then I have some upcoming board appointments, the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is the council's appointment, the Building Authority of Columbus. We have the mayor and council have appointments. On the Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison Encounters, this is the mayor and council appointment. Civic Center Advisory Board, this is also the mayor and council appointments. For the Crime Prevention Advisory Board, this is the mayor's appointments. The Historic and Architecture Review Board, this is council appointment, as well as the Planning Advisory Commission. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any, any further business needs to come forward, council today? Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Is there no second? All right, motion second to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.